Are one of our tech facilitators.
All right, welcome to our virtual TTPB meeting. We are going to cover a few basic items before beginning. To the members of the board and city staff, the chair, clerk, and technical facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting board members. Please be mindful that during any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted until completed. At which time, the chair will place panelists back on mute. Voting will be considered. Well, we're gonna do a roll call for each of these, so I'll go off script here for just a second. However, uh, let's jump down. You object to a unanimous vote, please use your raise hand feature. When the chair asks for objections, after clicking participants at the bottom of your screen, you can find the raise hand feature at the bottom of your participants list. Also, use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak or ask questions. This includes staff who is being asked the question. The chair will do their best to call on all committee members in order of which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of queue. Please wait for the chair to unmute you before speaking. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number on your original email. If you are watching the live stream, please mute the stream now. There is a thirty to forty second delay and the audio will cause feedback when you are muted. Members of the public who have registered to speak. When your name is called, the facilitator will find your name matching the name provided by your registration and permit you to speak. If your name does not match, you will not be permitted to speak. Please wait until you are unmuted to begin talking. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. If you need to share documentation, please send it via email, uh, please send it. I don't have that link, um. And you, you know what the link was that's provided on the registration?
It is my email?
I believe it is.
Yeah, um, my email is A S H R O E D E R at cityofmadison.com.
Unless there are questions of you. Unless there are questions of you, you will be unable to speak for the remainder of the meeting. In order to keep the meeting with the best quality we can, if you do not wish to speak, we encourage you to watch the meeting streamed at cityofmadison.com backslash uh, city channel or youtube.com uh, user city of Madison. Or find us on Spectra Channel nine nine four and Uverse Channel ninety nine. Chair of the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. I just want to um, welcome all board members, staff. Mayor Rhodes Conway, and then I also see um, Alder Harrington McKinney, so welcome as well. And oh, I see Alder Heck is too, so welcome to you Alders. Um, if there's anyone else I'm not seeing, welcome. Uh, and welcome all registrants and folks who are watching. My first item of business, approval of minutes from last month's meeting. Are there, is there a motion? Please use the hand raise feature. Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, actually, are we gonna do a roll call?
Oh, yes, we will. Um, but we still need a motion.
Uh, move adoption.
Is there a second? From members of the board, is there a second? Alder. Campbell, go ahead.
Second, and I think um, Alder Furman was referring to the roll call for our, for the meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you, yes, um. So, alright, so, alright, uh, excuse me, thank you for that, um. So, the clerk, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Audrey Lankala. Yes. Walter Dar, DeSanda Antana.
Present.
Christopher McAhill.
Present.
Eric Sundquist.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Rebecca Campbell. Margaret Bergamini.
Present.
Robert Burke.
Present.
Tom Wilson.
Present.
Well, let's hold off just a second here. Uh, Alder Campbell is, uh, can you unmute yourself? I have unmuted you. But I still see you as muted. Alright, let's go back to mute all and we will. Okay, Alder Campbell?
Second the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and then we're gonna do a, a roll call for this, um.
Sorry, we have to, one, one, is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no hands raised. Clerk will call the roll.
Audrey. Sorry, you're unmuted now. Can you, can you maybe raise your hand? I'm not hearing anything. If it's an I.
I.
Um. Baltazar.
I.
Christopher.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Grant.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
Rebecca.
Hi.
Um. Margaret.
Hi.
Robert.
Hi.
And then Tom, I think you're not voting.
Correct.
And as was Audrey, sorry.
Passes unanimously. Next item, public, do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Disclosures and recusals, are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the body? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, you will move on to our first item, Legisar six zero three four one. Opening comments from Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom, and thanks to everyone for being here uh, virtually. Uh, appreciate you all figuring out how the technology works and uh, making it work so that we can continue to have meetings uh, even though we can't be in a room with each other. And, and thank you as always for your service. I very much appreciate the time that you spend um, on the policy and issues for the city of Madison. And I wanna um, cover a few things. Um, a, a, a little bit of a, a big picture on how the city's dealing with the pandemic, um. And the, its impacts. Um, uh, uh, and then how, uh, I hope that your um, board will help with that. Um. And uh, you know, sort of take into account uh, how things have changed. Um, given the pandemic, so. And forgive me, I know that some of you know this in, in great detail and others of you maybe less detail, but just for the sake of getting us all on the same page and making sure that anybody who's um, watching on the, I guess we have to say now the award-winning city YouTube um, channel. Uh, just to, just wanna go through a few things, um, the, the city has been working uh, on COVID nineteen since the end of January. Um, obviously, our response has changed over the months um, and ramped up considerably. Um. And without going through all of that, you'll hear some transportation relevant details, I think, um, later on in your agenda. Um, but I do wanna just talk a little bit about the biggest picture, um, and uh, the particularly in light of the fact that the state Supreme Court is um, hearing arguments on the safer at home order this week. Um, so the, the, the biggest tool that we have against the, the um, novel coronavirus at this point is uh, physical distancing because we don't have a vaccine, because we don't have a, a specific cure or treatment. Um, our best hope is to reduce the number of infections um, and retain the capacity of our healthcare system. Um, and that means um, not being in contact with each other essentially. Um, our healthcare system is doing fairly well. Um, but that's because we have been practicing uh, good physical distancing locally. Um, and so thank you all for your part in that. Um. And we will continue to look at um, you know, the, the progress of the science, um, so certainly uh, once we have a widely available vaccine, a lot will change. Um, until then, we'll continue to be uh, looking at our ability to test people widely, uh, which is expanding, but not yet where it needs to be. Um, we'll look at our ability to do contact tracing, um, which again is, is expanding here, particularly here in Dane County. Um. Uh, and you know, is, is that at the level that it needs to be? Um, we'll look at our hospital capacity, which again, in pretty good shape right now. Um, but we need to be able to maintain that. Um, and we'll look at the number of new cases over time. Um, so if you haven't already, I really encourage you to look at the information that Public Health Madison Dane County is putting out. Um. They have a, a great dashboard with data on it and you can see our local curve. Um. And um, they are working on uh, you know, getting more data out as they can to help us all understand, um, you know, how, what the progression of the pandemic is locally. Um, and how we will be taking that into account as we think about um, you know, sort of dialing back on the restrictions um, and starting to open things up again. Um, at this point in time, that's really under the control of the state, um, I assume at some point the state will devolve more of that control back to county health departments, um, and so that will be um, uh, Public Health Madison Dane County then will be making recommendations around that. Um. But I just, it, you know, I think it's important to keep in mind that while we're doing a really good job locally and we have not, we have seen a fairly flat curve. Um, that's because, I think, of the strictness of the restrictions that we have put in. Um, and that will change. Um, that will change over time, uh, until we have a vaccine. So our hope is that we can keep the curve relatively flat, um, and start to ease back and open things up a little bit more. Um, but we're gonna have to be smart about that and it's gonna take everybody's um, participation. Um, it, part of that, of course, is not having committee meetings in person. Um. And so I, I, I know it's sort of, um, how should I describe it? Let me just say this, it sucks to not be able to have meetings in person. Um. And uh, I'm totally thoroughly sick of Zoom meetings, as I, I'm sure you all are as well. Um, but nonetheless, it's, it's definitely part of everything that we're doing um, to help uh, keep this disease under control. Um. And now that you all have figured out how to do this, um, you know, I think that you will be able to meet at least monthly um, for the foreseeable future. Uh, and I do want you to know that IT is working on um, solutions for what happens next. Um, so now that we've figured out how to do this all virtually, um, they are figuring out what happens when we're able to have ten people in a room together. Um, or twenty-five people in a room together and do, you know, what does a hybrid version of meeting in person and virtually look like? Um, and then at some point in time, maybe we can just get back to all having in-person meetings. Um, but that's gonna be a process, um, and uh, city IT is, is working hard on that, so. Um, I just want you to know that we support you, your continued meeting. Um, you know, while we're figuring this all out, um, and it, I ask for your patience in um, the changes in the technology that I, I know will be coming in the next um, months and perhaps year, um, as we work our way through this thing. Um. It, I, I also wanna talk a little bit about uh, your work. Um, obviously, we're trying to maintain um, as much of sort of the regular business of the city as possible. Um, and to, to move things through the legislative structure and um, you know, to not uh, unduly delay various projects and pieces of work. Um, so I appreciate you continuing to, to deal with things that come to you, but on the other hand, um, you know, the pandemic really changes everything. And so, um, just continuing with business as usual doesn't really make sense. Um, we are entering, I, I mean, again, I'm, I'm telling you things that you know, but just for emphasis, we're entering into the worst global economic situation that I think any of us has seen. Um, and it, it's, is, you know, this is beyond the Great Depression, uh, or, or beyond the Great Recession. It's, it's likely of depression scale. Um, and it's gonna be years uh, before our economy recovers. Um. You'll, again, you'll hear these numbers, but Metro is losing over a million a month. Um. Our operating costs are up um, by at least ten percent at the same time. Um, the VMT is down. Um, we think that um, head bike volume is, is holding steady, but it's more recreational than commuter probably. Um, so it, I mean, things are just changing a lot. Um, the, the city's budget, and I, I won't belabor the point, but um, this year alone, we're looking at probably a loss of twenty million. Um, and for next year's budget, we're looking at a gap of twenty to twenty-five million that we're projecting right now, and we only expect that number to get bigger. Um, so. Um, you know, that's, it's a lot of change, a lot of challenge. Um, and I, I think, um, as important as it is to try and, you know, maintain some sense of normalcy and certainly to continue the business of the city, I think for this body in particular, I would really ask you to, to question everything. How does this change in light of the pandemic? Is this still a priority? Um, is it more of a priority? Uh, because of the pandemic, and, and I think that the, some of the answers will be no, it's not a priority anymore, and sometimes the answer will be yes. We have to move this even faster, it's even more important. Um, but I think it's worth asking the question in every case. Um, how does this change? Uh, what do we need to do differently? How is the world going to be different over the next several years, whether that's because we're all gonna be continuing to physical distance um, for months and months to come, or because we're all gonna be wearing face coverings, or um, because uh, people are gonna be nervous getting onto buses, or because we're gonna be flat broke and out of money, or uh, or what, you know, I mean, I, I just think that, that we need to really think about how the world has changed. Um, and what that means we need to do in reaction to those changes. Um, and I, you are a, a smart, creative, innovative group of people, and I have complete confidence in your ability to to think um, both about what's happening and the implications of what's happening and how that applies to your work. Um, so I won't belabor the point, but I, I am calling on that creativity and innovation um, in your thinking now. Um. It, there's a number of projects that you're working on that um, I think remain important. Um, but possibly need to be looked at with a slightly different lens, um, or with, with new considerations, so. For example, the route study. Very important project, um, but a completely different uh, scope at this point, right? Because we've cut our routes down dramatically. Um, we have a big hole to climb out of in terms of ridership and revenue. Um, and so I think the, the question is no longer, how do we, um, you know, make the um. It, you know, recalibrate all the routes we have with all the resources we had. Uh, but rather, how do we think about the routes in relationship to lower ridership and lower revenue and lower budget forecast? Then how do we have, build a, a more efficient system um, that still serves the places and people that we need to be serving? Um, I think that conversation is important, but I think it's gotten a little more difficult. Um. Uh, Vision Zero also still very important, maybe some real opportunities now. Um, because VMT is down so much, do we have an opportunity to change things um, in ways that allow people to build new safer habits? Um, when the economy starts opening up again, um, do we have an opportunity to do messaging about um, now you're back in your car, how do you drive more safely, uh, you know, or now you're commuting to work again? How do we do that in a way that's, um, that's safer for everybody? Um. It, as we, you know, move forward with bus rapid transit and those plans, um, I think we do have to ask even more than we did before, how do we build ridership for the system again? Um, and how do we build a system that invites riders and provides an excellent experience for them? Um, who are our most critical riders and where do they need to go? Um, you know, do we think even more now about destinations and employers as partners in our planning? Um, knowing that, you know, our experience through the pandemic has been that the hospitals have been very clear how essential a service Metro is for them. Um, and taking that into account. Um. You know, we've totally upended our parking utility. And so how do we bring that back? Um, how do we think about um, you know, changes that we could make now? Um, again, when fewer people are driving, um, and fewer people are paying for parking and um, you know, how do we think about what changes might be needed? Um. And, and I, you know, sort of similarly with the Complete Streets work. Um, you know, it's a great time to be doing um, public uh, infrastructure work right now because there's so few people on the road, so are there projects that we could do quickly? Um, you know, are there things that we could uh, pilot? Um, and to see if they would work and to get people used to them. I just think that there's a lot of change and opportunity here. Um, and, and perhaps, um. Perhaps it can all be summarized in the idea of uh, we've completely, well, we, the virus has uh, completely disrupted our transportation system. And as we start to build it back um, and people's, um, how do we change people's behavior? Uh, and how do we build the transportation system that we want? Um, as we come out of this thing, and I, I think, um, you know, as awful as a pandemic is, and it's pretty damn awful. Um. We do have an opportunity to take advantage of this moment um, when we're all staying home and think about how to build the transportation system we want. And that's the work that I, I'm hoping that you will do. Um, that's the thinking that, um, I'm hoping that you'll take on. Um, and to give us, again, there's a, a lot of smart people on this body and um, I can't think of anybody better um, to be advising the city at this point in time um, in terms of how we structure uh, our transportation system and how we build back um, in a stronger and better and more sustainable and more equitable way. So let me end by saying thank you again for your service, um. And I appreciate the work that you're doing and the work that you will do um, as we move forward in this um, uncertain and difficult time. Um, it's a bright spot for me to know that there's folks like you who are, are thinking about the future of the city. So thank you, and I'm happy to take questions or comments if folks have them.
Thank you, Mayor Rhodes Conway. Are there any questions from members of the board? Please use the hand raise feature. Seeing none. Thank you, Mayor Rhodes Conway. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next item of business, um, Legisar six zero three one nine, introduction of the new Transit General Manager. Tom, I think you're gonna take that, let's see, here we go.
Great. Well, um. I think many of us have enjoyed and loved Chuck Camp and all that he did uh, for Metro Transit over, I don't know, twelve years that he was at the helm. But we conducted a nationwide search and it was exciting. We had a variety of very qualified candidates and the election team made up of uh, various people, members of the community, as well as uh, one or two members that's on this board, and they selected Justin Stornberg, and so I'm happy to introduce him and then also to brag on him. And comes from Indianapolis. Um, he was a cap, Vice President for Capital uh, Projects for the Indigo System, which means that he was at the helm as they implemented of the Redline Project, which was about a ninety-eight million dollar center running BRT project, so that's uh, a huge effort. He was also uh, leading projects for the Purple Line and other BRT extensions from that. Um, while he was there, they built the second largest electric fleet in America of buses. He also had a account-based air payment, which included mobile ticketing. So, um, a lot of the things that he did directly at Indigo, Justin, are directly applicable to some of the challenges that we are anticipating going through in the next five years. Um, before he was at Indigo, he also kind of founded his own transit company that worked with a, a national transit consultant in restructuring transit routes, right? And so that is something that we're just on the doorstep of doing with the route restructure. Um. Let's see, I'm looking at the thing. Other things on his um, resume include he was a, a senior engineer for City of Bloomington. And he also worked for Rolls Royce. So I don't know what he did at Rolls Royce, but he worked for Rolls Royce. I'd like to have Rolls. Um, he's uh, recently moved just this past weekend to the Near East side, but he's a District Six person. And I think he wants to remain a District Six. Um. So we are very excited to have him. I feel like Justin's skills are just uniquely tailored to the challenges that we're going to face in the next probably five years and just a, a great great uh, as per. And so I've, I've kind of bragged on him, I could probably do more. Um, there's a lot of side things he does too, but I won't, I won't go into those. Um, Justin, would you like to say anything to the group? Okay, Justin, we can't hear you, or at least I can't hear you.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My headphones are not working. Um, well, thank you, Tom, for that introduction. I really appreciate it. Um, as he, as Tom mentioned, I've, I've got a lot of experience doing a lot of the things um, that, that Madison um, and Metro Transit has, has had uh, in the pipeline and is, is interested in pursuing. Um, I'm really excited to, um, to bring that experience to Madison. Um. Uh, but on a personal level, um, I'm, I'm just very excited to be joining this team. Um, I think it's a fantastic group of people. Um, and, and Madison's a wonderful community that I'm, I'm really just excited to be a part of. Um, and, and I'm, I'm very excited to get started. Um, as, as the mayor uh, said, you know, this is a very unique time, right? So um, it's a very uh, odd way to start a position, um, but I'm for all the experience that, that I have, I think my strongest, uh, my strongest, uh, uh, my, excuse me. my, excuse me. I'm, I'm very flexible and very creative. And so I think I bring that to the table in the midst of this pandemic. And I'm, I'm very excited to be able to use those skills to react and to plan the system for, for what we have and as Mayor, Mayor said, for what we want the system to be. So yeah, with that, I, I'm just, I'm very excited to, to join this, the team and the city.
Well, thank you, Mr. Storenberg. Welcome. And I know we're all very, very happy that you're here and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from members of the board or either Tom or Mr. Storenberg? Please use the hand raise feature. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to next item. Let's just our 59745. Adopting the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan as a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. Who will be our staff presenter? Ah, there we go.
Uh, thank you, everybody. My name's Dan McCollough. I'm with the Planning Division, the city's project manager for the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. It does definitely seem like a lifetime ago when we last chatted in November after our initial public open house. So I'm going to briefly, quickly take you through kind of some of the, the big highlights of the plan. Talk about what's changed since we met last and, and then convey some of the comments and concerns that we've heard in the process. So I'm going to try to do that. I'm trying to do multiple screens. Hold on. And the screen two, share, okay. All right. Does everybody see my PowerPoint? All right, getting a couple of head nods. So so starting back a little bit from, from where we are, one of the precursors to this course, where we start all of our planning efforts is from our comprehensive plan. This is the city's guiding policy document. It is one of our largest public engagement efforts that we usually have. In this past effort, we had 15,000 people engage. And what we know is we're expecting a fair amount of population growth in the near term. About 70,000 new residents by 2040. And what Madison residents said overall overwhelmingly is that we wanted to encourage dense infill developments as opposed to peripheral growth that is spreading into, or into adjacent farmlands. So one of our big strategies that we used was, again, concentrate that highest intensity development along transit corridors, downtown and activity centers. And as you can see, I'm going to grab my my laser pointer. Oscar Meyer is right around there. You can see it has a couple emerging centers. It's right by the east transfer points on future BRT, has excellent transit access currently and in the future. So thinking about how we can implement transit oriented developments as well as a zoning overlay along these areas and how we plan to transition elements of these areas that are really geared towards the automobile to mixed use and pedestrian inner experiences. This is a fairly unique process because it is a three-phase process. The first was the strategic assessment that wrapped up early last year. That was really kind of setting the cities, you know, what are we hoping to get out of the redevelopment? The big picture elements from employment to affordable housing to open space. Right now, we're in the the special area plan, which is phase two. That's really how we make those previously agreed upon redevelopment objectives and vision, how do we make those happen? We're now back in the adoption process. This is our first of our referrals. Next is going to be the, our implementation, you know, what the city's decisions that are going to be making going forward, a guide for private developments to occur. And then hopefully we'll start seeing some of the, the fruits of redevelopment occur. The strategic assessment, I'm going to go through this really briefly. A couple of major themes were encouraging economic developments and equity, of course. Maintaining and encouraging a high amount of affordable housing, building more housing stock. So we can put a downward pressure on our increasing cost of living. Also make sure that this is really an area for everybody. It has a variety of jobs, has a variety of housing price points, has public spaces that are welcoming and engaging for all Madison's residents. And have this physically woven into the surrounding fabric of our neighborhoods. One of the, the plans that we deal with, that's really relevant in this study is the plan for highways from 1955, which envisioned a grade separated expressway running through Tenny Lapham. One of the projects that came out of that, of course, was Packers Avenue. It was originally, you know, as you can kind of see in the image on the right. Looks like a boulevard. What was really ended up being built was a highway. As you can see, very little. It, it doesn't look like a local street that's for people for supporting neighborhood or economic development along the, along its path. Very similar in traffic counts and traffic patterns to East Washington, University Avenue, Park Street. But it certainly doesn't have those intense neighborhood and economic development along its corridor. Because it is strictly a, a corridor built for moving cars. And this is what it looked like prior to that construction. That dotted line that's going through is the approximate path of Packers Avenue. Previously, Ekin Park was seamless with other areas of the neighborhood. You could walk right to Oscar Meyer, you could go down the street, go down the way to the neighborhood grocery store. Packers Avenue changed that. Resulted in the demolition of quite a bit of homes and businesses in Ekin Park and really began its, its path of separating the east, east and the north side. We've had quite a bit of engagement through this process. Going back to our phase one, but we had probably more than 20 community meetings, public events. Probably 550 to 600 people participated. That number could be low. We did online polling and survey. We also did a key constituency advisory group. This was a focus group that that was created to help us reach populations that are typically don't know how to engage or are left out of the city decision-making process. Got a lot of good feedback from them. As you can imagine, the more types of engagement we do, the better, because each type tends to have its own population that, that really wants to follow that. So our big picture concept, again, not much of this has changed, but weaving together the north and the east side maintain as a major corridor for employment, inclusive mixed-use hub and walkable commercial districts. Plan for the current and future transit and incorporate the wetland amenity into a neighborhood park. So this is our plan right now, as is in the document, but I'm going to skip ahead. Because I just, I think it's going to be easier just to talk about the differences from where we were when I was at TPBB back in November. So one thing that happened, we, first of all, significantly enlarged the existing green space previously. That was about an eight acre open space. Now it's almost 14. In doing so, we also moved the, the local street connection to Roth. That simplifies the proximity to the wetland and rail corridor and moves it to an existing adjacent street. Same basic land use pattern with mixed use on Commercial Avenue, transitioning to employment to the north. And all, of course, centered around a intermodal transit station. Looking at the bike and pedestrian network, a couple of major highlights again is the, the new off-street bike path from First up to what could be Coolidge. How it happens through here, we don't know exactly. But this would largely be using a outlot owned by MG&E. Looking at, you know, what are the comfortable bike routes through, through the area? Whether or not they are on-street, buffered, off-street, a cycle path, shared U-street, really thinking about the types of users and making sure that we do have those comfortable and safe facilities for riders of all type. Also looking in, we definitely heard from TPBB about additional signals at Third and Sixth in addition to a new signal at Coolidge. Certainly that will provide better access to the businesses along Pennsylvania. And also possibly set us up for future connections to Fordham if the rail yard ever goes away. Having those, those stub streets go up to that path could certainly be a benefit in the future. Also, long-term, thinking about the reconfiguration of the Packers and Aberg intersection. Right now, it certainly is at grade. We know that the DOT will hold its, its investment, but we are making it clear in the text of the plan that the long-term preferred alternative is an at-grade intersection. And looking at how we can improve the configuration of the ramps to really improve connectivity to and through the areas. Building heights, and we usually wouldn't talk about the building heights with TPBB. But we did wanted to show again how these are relatively intense, specific about how we can use the intensity of development to support current and future transit investments. Because we know this is an area that people take transit. We know it's an area that can effectively get many places in transit very quickly. And so we think that these heights are warranted. They make sense. Some of the heights may actually be in the plan. They may actually be a little high because I think they're pushing the airport height limit. So they may, what is allowed in the plan may actually be a little bit larger than what is actually built. But also thinking about some of the other goals having of the plan, having a variety of housing types at different price points, having a mix of ownership and rentals, having transit-oriented development, as we mentioned, I probably mentioned many times, a full spectrum of jobs, incubator space for the next generation of entrepreneurs. Making sure this, this place feels authentic and local and in finding those elements of the Oscar Meyer site that can be preserved to make it feel that it is really truly part of Madison that you can do in the history rather than just, you know, any old mixed-use area. And thinking how we can preserve the, the wetlands and incorporate that into a larger neighborhood park on the, on the Hartmire property. So I'm going to briefly go through some of the common concerns heard. There really are four four comments and concerns, being the Hartmire property, Coolidge Street, Madison Metros and the intersection with Aberg, particularly the, the suggestion that roundabouts might be appropriate. So the Hartmire property is 31 acres right now. Primarily the parking lot for the Oscar Meyer is access off Roth Street. We are showing, as I mentioned, about 14 acre open space with a wetland being a major part of that. We do have a wetland delineation that was provided to us by the Hartmires. This still, without having some development on the site, we lose those critical north, south and east-west local streets through the site. Those certainly are very important for encouraging transit-oriented development, a historic grid pattern that we know works very well. Also allows us a lot more flexibility and can improve transit service through the site. We, this proper, this concept does show about 500 acre or 500 units of residential on the remaining development portions of the site. And one thing that we always like to keep in mind, from a sustainability perspective, we think this makes sense. We know this is an area where we have far lower rates of driving, especially compared to peripheral growth. And that, of course, translates into a carbon footprint. Coolidge Street, the plan is recommending to reestablish the historic street connection between Ekin Park and Oscar Meyer. Again, this is one of four street connections that historically existed, but then were removed. Talking with staff from Traffic Engineering and MPO, both are really, you know, there's, there's a, not a, a feeling that non-local traffic will be using this. This will be a connection that's predominantly serving neighborhood users, predominantly residents, possibly the, you know, East Madison Little League field is, is still there. The volume that would be expecting from estimates provided by the MPO would be that of a typical neighborhood street. A great example of that would be Jennifer Street, right by Orton Park, very similar context, highly residential, frequently heavily used park. We're not recommending a, a change in design to Coolidge Streets in Ekin Park. We actually think that street works really, really well. The narrowness forces slower vehicular traffic. And, you know, certainly we, I don't think we have a desire to have any fast vehicle traffic through there. And through this planning process, you know, we, we have looked at alternative intersection configurations and those could continue to be investigated as part of a construction project for that intersection. The metro facility, just recapping, this is a separate policy decision that we made by the city council. It's not really germane to this plan, but we do know there would be comments. We want to discuss that really quick. As many of you all know, this is a secondary facility, not replacements for the East Washington facility. But land use recommendations and the current zoning would allow for the use. And also something that also has come up that, that probably that we pushed pretty hard for through this plan is the federal grant now is, is really just for building 42 and 50. And the lands of the north would be separate, which means if the city wants to pursue other uses, non-metro uses for that area, possibly through an IFP process, that is certainly something that could happen in the future without federal approval. We do have concerns about the facade. We've, you know, we've been working with Metro and their staff to make sure that that facade certainly doesn't detract from the pedestrian environment from those areas. We think it's something that can be overcome. And we do know that there will be additional eyes on it as it is a public process. It will have to go through an additional UDC review. Roundabouts, the plan does recommend roundabouts. Or actually, the plan graphic shows roundabouts. The plan itself recommends improved connectivity that supports local street connections. And roundabouts may be one of several options that are investigated, but certainly it doesn't have to be the only the only option. One of benefits that roundabouts do have is they, they do, they can reduce speed, especially for this area where Aberg is transitioning from a highway design into a local street section. The roundabout force deviation, which does reduce speed. Certainly it would not reduce, reduce speed as similar to a traffic light where people would come to a complete stop. Although from some of the comments we've heard in the neighborhood, those, those stop signs or those stoplights are frequently ignored anyways. So this would at least provide some level of speed management. Another benefit of, of roundabouts, as we mentioned, they do have additional flexibility to adding more connections. One that's not shown, but that we did show in a previous alternative was to include a connection to Pancrat's and Aberg. That would provide an additional connection to the employment zones by by the airport as well. Just kind of, as I mentioned, this is our first referral. We'll be going to Board of Park Commissioners next week, and then we have a couple of other meetings with committees that hope to be back online. And then we will be moving to council on July 14th. And with that, I'm happy to take questions or I can wait till after public comments.
So we will go to public comments next. So I believe the way this will work, the clerk will announce the registrant and then, and if you would, maybe announce the one following so people can be prepared. You'll have three minutes to speak and you'll be unmuted one at a time. And you're... Okay. You're still muted. There we go.
Okay. Sorry. The first registrant is Beth Sloss, and the next one is Bernice Armold.
Hello. Thank you. It's good to sort of see everybody. I wanted to speak in particular to several things related to Coolidge Street. One of those is the Coolidge Street extension is highly disdained and looked upon very poorly as an option for the Ekin Park neighborhood. And one of the comments that I perceive is that the Roth Street crossing, the railroad crossing with the Canadian Pacific, is at the end of the current Roth Street. And at this point in time, and it's in the handout I submitted earlier today, the Canadian Pacific Railroad is actively against adding new crossings. So, to say that the Coolidge Street extension would go through Sherman on a new crossing, I don't think that's likely to happen. I also wanted to support the mayor's concept for looking in a new, with a new set of eyes. And what I would like to suggest is that at this point in time, we open up Coolidge Street for pedestrian and bike traffic at the end, where it opens up into Packers Highway. And I don't know what's keeping us from looking at adding a traffic light there now and a safe crossing, and let's test-drive that as a pilot, as the mayor has suggested, that we get extremely creative. As it relates to Hartmeyer, initially, we were looking at three acres. Dan then added an additional 10 acres towards a park area. And then, with the increased wetland delineation up to over seven acres, I was hoping that we would be looking at a little bit over 17 acres of wetland in support of upland towards that property that the city would consider buying. And then, at this point in time, both groundswell and the county have said, if the city is willing to take the lead on the Hartmeyer property towards an open green space and conservation park perhaps, that these other players would come to the table as well with potential funding. But at this point in time, what we need is the city to say, yes, they're interested, and that we would be able to convene a group of partners. There are people coming forward as well from the community that are willing to donate towards the purchase of this property. So, it could be a really innovative, again, reflecting the mayor, let's look outside the box. There's going to be a lot of development around the area north of Aberg. There's high density over on Packers Highway on the new Oskar Meyer property. And in particular, if the mayor is looking at developing that north end in a creative way, lots one and two outside of what the metro people are looking at doing. Firstly, we need to look at that property and determine if it's safe from a contamination standpoint. High-level industrial use there from Oskar Meyer has caused some pretty significant contamination with highly carcinogenic substances in the groundwater, especially at that north end. Oskar Meyer had to have its high-capacity wells turned off, no longer able to use them for food production because of those contaminations.
So, Beth, if you could wrap it up quickly here.
I just have a question for Tom Lynch. If he could speak to perhaps the current, the environmental site assessment that the city's going to do as part of their due diligence in the purchase of the 15 acres for $13 million, which seems like a high price. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Bernice Armold, and then after that, Paul Noldner.
Hi. My name is Bernice Armold. And Beth, I think, knows far more, vastly more than I do about the Hartmeyer section of the Oskar Meyer development. I will say that I certainly am in favor of expanded green space, particularly with the greater density that's being projected and planned for that area. I am especially in opposition to the Coolidge intersection being available to vehicular traffic. I live in Ekin Park. I'm very familiar with the sentiments that have been expressed in a myriad of format in opposition to the intersection allowing for vehicular access. I have no problem with the development of the Oskar Meyer site. The idea of connectivity, I believe, can be met very adequately insofar as that specific intersection goes with pedestrian and bike traffic. I cannot, for the life of me, and I followed the presentation that was given very, very carefully this evening, as I have paid close attention to previously, I don't see any good reason to have vehicles accessing into Ekin Park or the need for vehicles from Ekin Park using that method and that particular intersection to access the new Oskar Meyer development. There's nowhere to go should there be traffic coming into Ekin Park, but to use the already existing corridors that open up onto Packers and/or East Washington. And I know from many, many, many conversations at public forums as well as personally, that I have not heard from a single solitary person that lives in Ekin Park that's interested or desirous of a way to get a vehicle out of Coolidge, onto Packers, or over to the Oskar Meyer development. I think it's safe to say, the people in Ekin Park, the people who live here, the people that would be most impacted by this facet of the plan, are very, very strongly in objection to it and are perfectly happy to use other means, be they bicycles, walking, or other roads, to take advantage of and have access to the development that's coming about. So, I just want to say, again, I spoke at the last public meeting in front of the Transportation Board, that I think I can say confidently that I speak for the majority of residents in the Ekin Park area. We do not want the intersection at Coolidge open to vehicular traffic.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernice.
All right. Now, Paul Noldner, and then after that, Eugenia Maria Highland Granadas.
So, I believe Paul wants me to share a screen here.
Yeah. Hello? Okay. Do you have me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. I just want to quickly thank the mayor for being flexible, looking at this, and for looking at this as an opportunity as well as a problem. And I'm not just talking about COVID. I'm talking about climate change and what that means for that green space you see in front of you and what its value is to the city. For one thing, it's a very large, closed basin. So, building roads through there that are impermeable and putting in buildings that could potentially go on the areas around it with denser building or on East Wash or on Packers really doesn't make sense. Whoops. Sorry about that. I have to turn off my phone. So, I don't think we should rush to develop that, especially in this time, and we've got to question everything. But that open space also represents something we can do at far less cost than the 17 million for the bus barn on the north end. It's an area that we can make into a nature destination for the city, not just for a little neighborhood park. This is potential to be, given where it's located on commuter routes that I show there. The yellow ones are potential bike and walk commuter routes. I forgot to draw the one across on Coolidge to Ekin, but that's there too. No new streets in this area, no cut-through streets. Roth Street connects directly over onto Coolidge through an existing permitted railroad crossing. And I'm just going to take you through a couple of the advantages here. Connect the neighbors in the city, move, give people a nice place to go, not just to go somewhere else and get on a bus, but a nice place in the neighborhood to go, and move people, not cars, when you're moving them through this area. I'm not against having building. It should go up and not out. And I think we do need more housing, but we also need green space. The demand is going up with COVID, as you can see. It also gives safe commuting with safe spacing when people are on that kind of transportation. There's also two connectors on here at the north and south ends of the map. You'll see a yellow line going across Packers that represents a current dead-end bike path that just quits when it gets to Packers Avenue there, coming from the Ekin Park neighborhood in Starkweather Creek. And on the south end, that's a dead-end bike path where it hits Packers Avenue at Demetral Field and the Dog Park and the connections to the east side. Similarly, those dead-end bike paths could be extended into this area if we keep the whole area, so it becomes a bike transportation hub as well as a destination. And now, having said that, I don't want to waste your time, but I'll enumerate a couple comments. We're not just a small group. We represent with the support of the Sherman Neighborhood Association, which covers most of this area, supports saving all 30 acres as a community, nature park, and shared community, socially accessible, safe, open space and for commuting. And on the other, Ekin Park fully supports this. We have a longer list. I could enumerate, but it's in your handout. The takeaways, in case I run out of time, are, please make sure to ask, I'm asking the transportation to ask for a full ecological opportunities assessment. What I'm talking about are, what happens if you save this green space at relatively low cost, low cost long-term, all the climate and carbon and water benefits as well as the community benefits? And then, what happens with that? We should assess that as part of that city assessment, not just, is there pollution here? That's really taking a too-narrow view. So, please ask for that. The second one is ask city-
Your time is up, Paul, so please be quick.
Okay. Ask city planning and other staff to include option C. The public option is what we're calling this. We respect Dan. Dan's doing a great job, but we think that a public option deserves to be part of the plan in front of the city and in front of the public for evaluation. Thank you.
All right.
All right. So, next is Eugenia Maria Highland Granadas, and then Anita Weir.
You hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi. My name is Eugenia Maria Highland Granados, not Eugenia. And I live in Ekin Park neighborhood. I live over Moland Street, and I live with my six-year-old daughter. And I'm really, would like to speak in opposition to the city of, like, of the plan of building a traffic four-way stop at Packers and Coolidge. We already, as a lot of people have already shared with you all, that I can assure what one of the speakers said, that most of us who live here in Ekin Park oppose to that intersection of our Coolidge. There is already, cars already speed a lot in the neighborhood, and that is just going to increase traffic and the speed. And it's next to a park that I, we love all to go, and us who have little children, we really love to go to that park, and it's just putting our children at risk. There is no need to open that street to Packers Avenue. Commercial is right there, and it doesn't make any sense. So, as much as you are hoping, you all are hoping, as I heard of not, your intentions are not to increase the traffic in the neighborhood, it will happen. And we completely oppose to that. And as one of the speakers said, I also believe that I'm talking in the name of the majority of the people, if not all, everybody who lives here in my neighborhood. We have already experienced, we will already experience a lot of disruption with the F-35s, with the airport, like, you're just opening up again another thing that is going to hurt our community and my neighborhood. So, please, just don't open up that street. There are already streets that provide whatever you want to provide with that. That commercial avenue works best for that. So, please, don't do it. We will totally oppose, and we will organize, and we won't allow it to happen. Or we will do our best to stop it from happening, because there are many bad things that are already happening to our neighborhood. And yeah, so that's it.
Thank you, Eugenia.
All right. Anita Weir, and then Lori Jean Meister.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Objective eight of the Oskar Meyer Special Area Plan states that the plan should deploy sustainable technologies, improve stormwater, and preserve environmental assets. Consequently, the city should preserve all 30 acres of the Hartmeyer property. Preserving the entire property will, as the Audubon Society says, enable the wetland to have a vital upland border that wildlifes in the wetland need for part of their life cycles. Wetlands also collect and improve stormwater. Additionally, this green space has long been an area where nearby residents and workers in local businesses can enjoy the environment in the middle of an urban area. The Hartmeyer property would provide a walkable area in a high-density district. Please sustain this natural environment. Thank you for your attention.
All right. Next is Lori, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Jean Meister, and then Katie Shannon.
I see. I think you're muted.
Wait.
There are no attendees under that registration name.
Okay. Then Katie Shannon and Renee Waack.
This is Katie. Hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. So, I am in the Ekin Park neighborhood. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the Ekin Park Neighborhood Association as one of the two co-chairs. The members of Ekin Park who spoke earlier are absolutely spot-on. There is no support for this in our neighborhood. If anything, there is a lot of frustration. We have not supported this and have questioned it from the beginning. And as we've tried to get answers and we've tried to be cooperative, we're just not getting a lot back. And just looking at the points that were addressed earlier, alternative intersection configurations could be investigated. We've yet to see these investigations. The only option that we have been shown is the current Coolidge and Packers four-way stop. We would love to see other options for that, but it's just not been explored. Additionally, it's ludicrous to think that you would open up a street and people wouldn't use it. We're kind of tired of being told that over and over again. We already have problems with people speeding on that street. We will continue to have problems with people speeding on that street. Additionally, it may have been a historic connection, but it's my understanding that connection was 65 years ago. And if you think about how houses and neighborhoods and street patterns and traffic patterns have changed, it's not the same world. Just because something is historical does not necessarily mean that it is correct. And so, this is something that we should learn from and should not reconnect it to Packers. From a Neighborhood Association perspective, agreeing with the comments earlier, this is something that we will continue to address. We would love to do it in a collaborative manner to see other alternatives, as we believe there are other alternatives. But the four-way open to vehicular traffic is something that we cannot and will not support. Also, I want to agree with Paul earlier. The Ekin Park Neighborhood Association does 100% support the Hartmeyer property. We appreciate all the work that they've been doing for that, and we support that completely. But just, again, to go on the record, there is no way that we can support this four-way. And as the historical, we want to talk about historical Oskar Meyer neighborhood, we would appreciate if our feelings were considered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie.
All right. Next is Renee Waack, and then Linda Justman.
Hi. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. And thanks to the board for this opportunity to speak. So, again, my name is Renee Waack, and I am here representing the Sherman Neighborhood Association, which wholly includes the Oskar Meyer factory site and all but a small part of the Special Area Plan within our borders. And I just want to acknowledge that we do support our neighbors in the Ekin Park neighborhood in their request to not see the connection to Packers Avenue as well as the comments made by Paul Noldner about the Hartmeyer natural area. And so, I want to limit my comments to three aspects of the plan that I think deserve additional- that I think deserve additional investigation before the plan is approved. So first is related to the proposed density of housing as it relates to traffic concerns. The current plan uh proposes a large number of new households uh in my neighborhood. And the plan does not address the increased number of cars that this additional housing will provide. Um, the north side is not in any near-term phase of the BRT plan, though we did see the addition of the route running up uh to North Sherman Avenue in future. Uh, but anyone living on the north side knows that right now bus service is somewhat limited on our side of town. So the majority of our new neighbors will need vehicles to get around. This plan will add thousands of new cars and new car trips to an already congested street. And this is precisely not fitting with the described aim of the Oscar Meyer Strategic Assessment Committee, which I served on in creating a walkable, bikeable neighborhood. Second, the plan does not fully represent a large transit item, the proposed bus storage facility, which we realize is a separate item. Um, but whatever you think of the bus barn at Oscar, the fact of the matter is that moving metro to this site will add even more vehicle trips to Aberg Avenue. And unlike the new neighbor traffic, these will be large vehicles passing through a choke point at Aberg's and Packers and down a narrow strip on Sherman Avenue. Again, this does not follow the walkable, bikeable vision that was set out by the assessment committee or that's been championed by my neighborhood. Third, the plan has not followed the recommendation of the committee to consult with other government entities that will be impacted by the increased traffic, specifically the uh Village of Maple Bluff. Uh, to our knowledge and in recent conversations with a Village of Maple Bluff meeting, uh, the city and its consultants have not reached out to Maple Bluff, who not only border the planned area, but also own three blocks of Sherman Avenue, which will experience much increased traffic and would be part of the proposed BRT route. Their own development plan calls for their three blocks of Sherman Avenue to be pedestrian-oriented in order to drive businesses to their shopping center. And so it seems incongruous that the city was suddenly route car and bike traffic through what amounts to a Maple Bluff pedestrian mall. So I've registered as neutral regarding this plan, but I do feel strongly that these items need to be addressed before the plan can be called complete. And that concludes my statements and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renee.
All right, Linda Justman and then Maggie, no last name.
I don't see a Linda.
There's no one in the queue by that name.
Okay, then Maggie. And then um David Beerman.
Hey Maggie, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, my name is Maggie Free Spirit and I live on Coolidge Street in the Ekin Park neighborhood. Uh, just for those of you who don't know our neighborhood, I just wanna describe a little bit of it. Um, our neighborhood is pretty closed off. We have Aberg Avenue to the north, um, East Washington to the west, south to size, and then Aberg Avenue. So it's kind of a triangle. Um, we have two main ways into the neighborhood on East Washington and on Commercial Avenue, which are both designed to handle lots of traffic. And from Commercial, you can take North Street up to the um East Madison Little Leagues. Um, right now, there are speed bumps on North Street and on Myrtle Street, which is just north of Coolidge Street because of all the huge traffic problems we have and all the speeding. Um, I'm speaking out against the four-way intersection at Coolidge and Packers. And I could totally see it being a three-way intersection, then allowing pedestrian bicycles to come into our neighborhood. Um, we would love to be connected with a Oscar Meyer neighborhood that will be built, but not with cars on Coolidge Street. Coolidge is a residential street. Um, we can't handle that traffic. And I know Dan said in this presentation that um, they're doing it to serve the neighborhood users. Um, he's brought that up at when the open houses, I've been to all the open houses, no one at any of the open houses has supported this. Um, people have actually specifically said, we don't want another entrance and exit into our neighborhood. Um, nobody wants to get onto Packers from um Coolidge Street. Um, the couple other things I want to point out is that even the city's traffic management programs and the regional transportation plans say that you should direct traffic out of neighborhoods. Um, to keep traffic out of local neighborhoods. I don't see the sense in allowing traffic from a six-lane arterial highway to turn directly onto a narrow residential street where there's nowhere to go. Um, if people come into Coolidge Street eastbound from Packers in either direction, you still have to end up back on Commercial Avenue, which is designed to handle that kind of traffic. Um, the other thing I want to say, um, and Katie kinda touched on that, is that um, he also said, you know, sixty-five years ago, we we were connected to Oscar Myers, but that's been sixty-five years ago. Lots of things have changed. Um, Packers is gonna be there. Adding in an intersection isn't gonna um change anything at all. It's just gonna ruin our neighborhood. Um, one other thing I want to, actually a couple other things, we've been told at different meetings, different reasons for this. Um, one was that our neighborhood is isolated and not connected to any other neighborhood. Um, putting in an intersection with a six-lane highway is not gonna make us more connected to anything. Like I said, make it, we actually discussed with him, the whole neighborhood has said, put up stoplights. I know they wanted, he said that, you know, calming traffic on Packers, that's great. We would love to have a stoplight there. Love the BRT bus stop near our street. But there's, it doesn't make any sense to send all that traffic onto residential street where all you have to do is go three blocks south and exit on Commercial Avenue. I've talked to my neighbors, a lot of them who um can't do Zoom and were not interested in being involved, but not one-
Your time is up, Maggie, if you could wrap up quickly, please.
Okay. None of my neighbors support this. Um, and I really wish, like Katie said, that we could come up with options, particularly the ones presented by us on our altar, to make it three ways with just pedestrian and bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
All right, David Beerman and then Greg Bump.
I'm not seeing anyone with the name of David. Uh, we do have Greg.
Okay. Greg and Jim Powell.
Hi, uh, thank you for having uh this opportunity to talk about this. Uh, I too live on Coolidge Street and I am also opposed to this uh part of the plan to open up the intersection to a four-way crossing. Um, and frankly, I don't see a need to uh stop traffic on uh Packers at all there. Um, it it's, it is a a throughway. There's really no potential for opening business on the uh, I guess, east side of of uh the the uh Packers Avenue um and and into Ekin Park because there's there's no available lots there. So I don't, I don't see the argument about it being potentially uh help- helpful to commercial uh uh expansion here. Um, that I've lived in the neighborhood now for, I think, twelve or thirteen years. Never felt like the isolation that um was referred to as been a drawback. Um, it's never been an inconvenience to just go up to Commercial to get out of the neighborhood. Um, and uh I was part of the uh group that uh was able to lobby for the speed bumps on uh north because uh I heard a lot of neighbors at the time saying that traffic was too fast there and doesn't make any sense. Uh, if the city didn't a study and agreed that traffic moves too rapidly on North Street, that opening up the neighborhood to potentially more traffic on Coolidge, which is much narrower, and I think uh regardless of what uh I heard, uh, it doesn't necessarily slow cars down. Um, it only makes them drive faster between two parked cars on either side of the street. So it's, it creates a dangerous situation. We've had a number of cars uh come into the neighborhood over the years. Uh, and and uh they hit a house across the street from me, uh, hit a vehicle on another neighbor's house across the street. Not sure why that's happening, but uh inviting more traffic into the neighborhood, more cars is not gonna, I think, alleviate that either. Um, let me just uh, the, I mean, there has been some really nice revitalization in the neighborhood over the last five or six years with uh a tip, the the tip-top and uh um cabaret and uh uh some some development there, but that doesn't, that will not benefit at all from opening up Coolidge Street. Um, so I don't see what the possible purpose could be. Bringing people in from Packers right where a very popular park is in the neighborhood as well, where there are a lot of uh children playing, a lot of families. Um, does not seem to serve any purpose either. So I, I wanna thank everybody who spoke earlier. You made much more coherent and uh uh better arguments than me. Thank you very much, everyone, and uh that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, Jim Powell and then Paul Noldner said that Linda Justman's uh connection didn't work and she asked that he read her comments.
Okay. I'm sorry, who is our next speaker?
Jim Powell.
Jim Powell, okay, I do see him here.
Yeah, Jim, can I unmute? You unmute yourself. Uh, you're unmuted on our end. You just need to unmute yourself. Jim, there should be a pop-up dialog or something, uh, asking you to unmute yourself. It may be hidden behind the screen, uh, the current Zoom screen.
Why don't we come back to Jim? Let's go on to the next one.
So this is Paul Noldner uh reading comments for Linda Justman.
Okay.
Okay, are we good to go?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'll keep this short. Um, hi from Linda Justman. She lives in the neighborhood, is good friends with Chet at Chet Car Care, right on the north border of this. Um, she and Chet had comments, I'm gonna read Linda's. Uh, Chet's only comment was, um, he does not like the roundabout and tons of of bus traffic coming out right there on that corner by his business. He does support the thirty acres, uh, saving Hartmeyer as a natural area. There he thinks it makes the neighborhood great. Linda Justman says this. Now more than ever, Madison needs to pay attention to preserve open space for people. It is most important to have safe places in nature to go for quiet time recreation and education. I speak representing the north side neighborhood that includes this historic wetlands. But we are being asked to change. On the downside, not to complain, more diesel diesel traffic, more more bus, more trash, more water usage, how much can this area absorb? Has an environmental study, impact study been planned? What will this area look like in five years? There's enthusiasm to build and develop this pocket of Madison. There should be no cut-through roads, no roundabouts or three-hundred-vehicle bus barn. Um, that's, I'll just leave it at that. That's her comment. Focus to, the focus should be sustainability in nature, not more infrastructure that must be maintained. Coming from San Francisco, too many projects are languishing and exhausting the city. Please appreciate Madison as a global campus of working professionals and kind natural environments. Doing less can be good. And those are are her comments there.
Thank you.
I would take the liberty if I have a moment-
No, sorry, I'm sorry, Paul, um, just Linda's comments, but thank you.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, and then if Jim Powell has um been unmuted?
Uh, Jim has still not unmuted himself.
Okay. Um, then we have a number of people who are um registered and available to answer questions. Let me read those. Um, oops. Mike Lori Park Hill Circle in opposition. Ashley Kennert Short, Dell Street in opposition. Jennifer Fandell, Coolidge Street in opposition. And Chris O' Ruskin Street in support. In addition, there are a number of people registered who um don't wanna speak. Um, Sarah Kendrick, Coolidge Street in opposition. Jenny Rodriguez, Coolidge Street in opposition. Candace Diaz, Superior Street in opposition. Kelly Yates, Coolidge Street in opposition. Brittany Falkowski, Coolidge Street in opposition. Virginia Schlotz, Sherman Avenue in opposition. Kanye Nebarger, uh, Stang Street, support. David Diamondstone, Coolidge Street in opposition. And there are just a few more. Let me get to those. Um, Heather Huber, Coolidge Street in support. Catherine Willett, Maplewood Lane in opposition. Leslie Lutrell, Prop Avenue in opposition. Nancy Crawford, Almo Avenue. Um, neutral neither supporter or oppose. Anne Freewald, Sheridan Street in support.
Thank you, Anne. Are there any questions from board members for any of our speakers or registrants? Please use the hand raise feature. I'm seeing none. Questions for staff? Eric Sunquist, go ahead.
Thank you. Our uh Dan?
Dan, you should have a prompt.
Yep, sorry, I had switched windows to-
Yep, thanks, Dan. Um, so um going back to to the two main items that you mentioned were the items of concern that you guys heard. The intersection at Coolidge Street, um, I am inclined to, we can give remarks later, but just by background, I'm inclined to believe that it would not generate very much cut-through traffic, as you said, and as the model adjusted, but um if I were a neighbor, I might not, you know, I might want more um assurance than that. So I think at each of the steps that I've been involved with this, there's been a discussion about limiting turns in and out freeway rather than four-way or some other arrangement. Um, did I understand your presentation that this plan as currently um envisioned would sort of kick that question down to the to the actual design phase of the intersection and be silent on it? Or what would be an appropriate way to address that in this plan? I guess is the big question.
Um, that that's a, that's a good question. So going back to our January open house, we did have some potential design options. Um, now certainly we recognize that this is a plan and it's very preliminary. Um, and we don't know, we're, we are very far from the construction phase. Uh, a couple of the alternatives uh designs that were suggested was something similar to East Washington and Livingston, uh, which did allow uh, so for Ekin Park, that would allow a right-in, right-out um on Ekin, as well as uh a two-phase pedestrian crossing. Um, so that would achieve that. Um, it, that's, as I mentioned, that's what there is on East Washington now by um Festival Foods. Um, it's not perfect. Um, it does get some connectivity. Um, from what we've heard from uh the the adjacent alders, it's not the most popular intersection uh because it is that two-phase process, that two-phase crossing. Um, you know, I I think there is different intersection types that could be explored. One of our concerns, though, um, with just a straight three-way is we would never, there would not be, from what we understand, there would likely not be the pedestrian warrants to get a pedestrian phase on that signal. Um, that would mean that there could be straight northbound traffic without um a traffic light. They'd have no traffic control. Um, so that doesn't necessarily help with kind of pulling backpackers to what it should be. Um, but I I, you know, if you feel having a intersection design um is necessary or recommended, that's certainly something that could be incorporated. Um, but we we do not at this point recommend a specific intersection configuration other than a four-way access.
And the warrant issue is because you gotta satisfy WISDA? Because if it was just a city project, we could do our own warrant?
Uh, Tom would probably be the better person to answer the warrant questions. Um, Tom or Yang?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Uh, yes, um, we generally like to we generally like to install signals where there's signal warrants. Otherwise, we'd probably install them at double the locations um within the city. Uh, this- um within the city. Uh, this particular intersection, the extension of Coolidge, um, would would be a candidate for various intersection treatments. It could either be a modified type of intersection where uh not all movements are allowed and still remain maybe stop-controlled, or it could be a a signal biased intersection. Um, I think perhaps um this could be modeled, but perhaps a a an indication of the types of traffic volumes that would be maybe in line with the type of of Coolidge Avenue would be Sixth Street, I think Sixth Street right now. I don't know, I think it carries twenty-one hundred vehicles per day, okay? So compare that with um say uh Packers Avenue is about forty, a little bit more than forty thousand, so uh twenty-one hundred vehicles is kind of in line with a Jennifer Street type of volume. So that's, does that provide background or some information, Eric?
Well, kinda, I mean, the Packers is a state highway there, right?
Um.
Or is it not?
It is.
It's, it's um, it's it is, but it's uh the control of it is of dispute. Uh, it was my understanding that uh the interchange, particularly, I'm particularly interested in that interchange uh because I don't feel like that interchange is the appropriate treatment for, basically, it's we are trying to make that an urban roadway, and an interchange is inconsistent with an urban roadway. And those words might haunt me later on today, right? Um, but, um, so uh one person at WISDOT said that it was with, we were responsible for that interchange, so um, that doesn't mean that's a conclusive. I haven't gotten that in writing, and I asked for confirmation, and then I never got confirmation.
Okay, well, I just, I mean, if it's an issue of warrants and it's under our control, that's one thing. If WISDOT has to agree, that might be another. Uh, there may be more sticklers for the warrant.
Yeah, I believe we could control the process for type of control at that intersection.
At at Coolidge. So I wonder, like, without, like, trying to uh design it here in real time, which is not appropriate, if some language in the plan that suggests that um the plan envisions full, full safe crossing for bikes and pads um and a uh vehi- a motor vehicle in and out on the uh Oscar Meyer side, uh but with potentially limited uh in and out on the uh Ekin Park side. Um, you know, leaving it at, that that gives you a lot of different options to kind of explore when you get to design. Would that Tom or Dan be uh amenable to staff? Do you think that's workable?
Uh, yeah, that would be, that would be fine.
Okay, and then um I'll be brief on the other part. I didn't mean to get that weedy on the intersection, but um maybe that that'll save others some time. Well, the other biggie is the um amount of green space on the Hartmire property. And um uh folks have argued that it is a greener option to do that, but Dan, your presentation at the beginning rightly showed that, you know, in the big picture, we're trying to tamp down sprawl and um the additional driving that would be um created if that, those five hundred housing units and the other land uses were scattered around and sort of business as usual. And so I guess have, my only question is, that's, I think that is unassailable in concept, but have you tried to quantify that at all? Is there any, can you say, I mean, you modeled the, you had the MPO modeled on the uh intersection, did you try modeling, you know, how much uh how many VMT generated carbon be generated one way or the other?
Yeah, just a, just a second. I'm gonna uh share something really quick, if you guys don't mind. Um, this is going back to Madison in Motion, um that some of you may recall. Um, and I'm just doing this kind of weird way, just so I can see you a little bit better. I'm trying to do two screens for the first time in Zoom, so um so going back, so during Madison in Motion, you know, we're looking at the city's mode goals uh using um Census Journey to Work data. And one of the things we we recognize is there is limited opportunity to change the mode outside the relatively central area of the city. Uh, this is because we can effectively serve um the peripheral areas with really effective all-day transit. Um, the density is too low, the the destinations are too dispersed. Um, and those areas will also, that they're just too far for um biking and walking to be legitimate mode shifts. So we started to look at, you know, what are the mode? If we look at the city not as a whole, but as in specific zones, what are we going, you know, what do we see? So when we start grouping um light categories of uh census, this is uh block groups, I believe, block group data. Um, we can see the pretty distinct pattern. So in this Zone One, and I'm gonna highlight um, grab my laser pointer again, so Zone One, um we have about forty percent of people are driving to work. That's really, really good. And that's because we have very effective transit uh and a generally uh proximate location between many residences and our major employment centers. Um, so they can bike in the summer, when maybe they don't like the weather, they can hop on the bus. We have mutually um supportive mode options. Think about this, but how quickly that changes um to a Zone Three, for example, uh which is pretty much um just we go from a forty percent to an eighty percent uh driving. So that, that's a pretty big change that occurs in a very short distance, and that likely has to do, as I mentioned, with those, the effective transit. So if we have five hundred units um and a a location that results in half of the um tra- um junior work trips uh going by car, um, you know, certainly we could come up with a little more data to probably finesse uh kind of explain the carbon footprint associated with that, but that's fairly significant. Um, and I'm gonna go to, this is probably graph you've seen before. This is how effective our transit system works right now. Um, basically, the darker the color, the better it works. Right now, we have very, very high transit service there. We can, we expect that to continue into the future with BRT because of that transfer point. Um, we do get very quick one, one-seat rides to many locations in Madison, so this is kind of that that mutually reinforcing um issue.
Okay, thanks. And last question on that, uh on the Hartmire. Um, first iteration of this had a a fairly small green space. You heard um feedback pushing for a a larger one. Um, you ended up, you know, it, and so it was started at, I forget what it was, five acres, and now we're at thirteen or something?
Mm-hmm.
And the
Just shy of fourteen.
The shy of fourteen and and so, but there are people wanting to kind of double that, basically. So why is, how did you, or you did on the number of acres?
Um, so when we first started out, um going to the Parks and Open Space Plan that was just completed by the the Parks Division, um they did not find this area deficient or um um uh regional, and I can't remember the other type of park. They have three classifications of parks. There's uh regional uh neighborhood and and so I can't remember. But what they did identify is this area, had it be, you know, if it were to develop to include um residential, which we anticipate some level of residential in the future, um it would be deficient for a neighborhood park, and those are typically around five acres in size. Um, at the time, we were using the best data that we had available, which is the Wisconsin DNR Wetland Inventory, um, which is an approximate, um certainly, and any development would require wetland delineation before it occurs. Um, that information was giving us about a three-acre wetland uh for a total of eight acres of open space. Um, when we certainly heard the feedback um from um residents, um as well as, you know, looking at the difficulty of some of the connections that would occur if that uh uh we had the um Coolidge go straight across um south of the wetland, um it just made sense to move that connection to the north, and that basically allowed us for a larger public open space. So um, for a while, it was, again, it was at thirteen acres. Um, uh, we then got the wetland delineation that was provided to us by the Hartmires. Um, wasn't something they had to provide. Um, but they they did. Uh, we shifted a little bit uh of the road network just slightly to better accommodate that wetland and make sure that we were um minimizing any impact on as, uh on as possible. Um, the wetland is really three parts. It is a a wetland, and then there's two additional constructed drainage swales. Um, basically draining parking lots. Um, wetland delineation report, so it's a very, it's a low-quality wetland, a lot of invasive species. Um, and again, it is not a um, it's not a virgin wetland. It's it's um a relatively low quality. It had been farmed. It's um it looks like the depressions were constructed to drain the baseball fields. Um, but we did kind of come about to this this current size of uh just under fourteen acres, a combination of um wetland and park. We've certainly heard from residents that uh they would prefer the park space to be a a more natural or wild park. Um, that's not something that we can do as part of the planning process that Parks Division's responsibility, once they have the parkland acquired. Um, and they would go through a park planning process, but we can, we certainly did incorporate those comments into our report. So those are um memorialized for their needs in the future.
Great, thank you very much.
Are there further questions for staff? I s- let's see. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, and Eric, I think touched on points I wanted to, so thank you, Eric, for that. Um, I guess put a finer point on the question about the Coolidge intersection. Um, so I think everybody's in agreement, there's a lot of value and have a good uh bike path connection between the neighborhoods there, particularly with the transit access. Um, and and it seems like there's quite a bit of uh objection from the Ekin Park residents around any potential for increased motor vehicle traffic, which is probably not surprising to any of us either. Um, I al- also agree with, I think, staff uh um assumptions that that it would not become a major thoroughfare uh through Ekin Park. But I guess um my question is in in line with Eric's questioning and looking at other intersections that maybe did not facilitate that kind of motor vehicle traffic uh coming into the neighborhood, what is the, what is the value in a four-way intersection um for motor vehicle access? What would we, what would be lost if we did implement an alternative that did not allow motor vehicle access uh on Coolidge into Ekin Park?
Sure. Um, well, first of all, we know a a grid-based network is is the fundamental, you know, it's it's a fundamental structure of neighborhoods. It's it's very resilient as a whole. Um, you know, neighborhoods go through cycles. They go through uh decline and revival. Um, and what we know with grid-based neighborhoods, they're very well-connected, is they, they they age very well. Um, absent outside forces. Um, one of the things that we do know with uh Ekin Park, it is, it certainly is isolated, and that as a response or as a result of Aberg and Packers severing potential intersections. And we do know that um historically, isolated neighbors can lead to challenges, uh social, criminal issues. Um, that i- in in a microcosm is occurring in Ekin Park. Um, there is some um activity on Coolidge that I'm sure the neighborhood residents uh wouldn't like if it was there. Um, there is some speeding as a result of that. Um, you know, I I think the, you know, having better connections is never bad. Um, they, you know, when we have multiple ways in and out of neighborhoods, that's gonna balance any vehicular traffic across multiple modes. Um, so while the residents might not mind going to Coolidge, in fact, they're actually driving more in the neighborhood by having out-of-direction travel. Um, if their concern is pedestrian safety in the neighborhood, they're actually creating additional traffic by preventing them from exiting, uh having a more direct path. Um, grids, I I just believe grids work better, uh connecting neighborhoods. Um, another thing with the street, it's inherently public. Um, anybody can be on a street and know they're welcome there. Um, sometimes the way bike paths are constructed, it's not necessarily inherent um that this is a public place that anybody can be. Um, so just making sure that people um can use those neighborhoods um with the mode that they choose. Um, i- is, is, I think, is something that's important.
Okay, thank you. Um, maybe switching gears to the the question about the green space and the sort of um quantity and placement of that. Um, it's hard to tell in the plan uh where there's currently a a sort of stand of woods like north and south. Um, looks like more or less where Ruskin Street um is is plotted out. Can you?
Yeah, I'm gonna put that back up in just a second. Hold on.
What impact would that proposed Ruskin Street have on the woods? I guess is my primary question.
Uh. All right, I need to switch this. Um, all right, so what impact would the the stand of trees on the Ruskin? Um, so one of the things we did is actually, you can kind of see, uh you can't see my mouse yet. Um, you can kind of see the stand of trees right here. We did very consciously uh push the road as far away from uh high-quality trees as possible. There are some oaks. Um, there are some lesser-quality trees in there as well. Um, but the majority of those trees are gonna be right there. Uh, so we are, we did shift the alignment to minimize any tree loss.
Was there any alternate that looked at uh not having that Ruskin Street uh go through there, but having the, kind of shifting the north-south street? Right now, it looks like what you're describing is Ruskin and then connecting up into Huxley on the north side. You have another street to the east of Ruskin.
Mm-hmm.
So was there any uh red draft that had that be the north-south?
Um, I would, we looked at kind of the balance of open space um and development space, and that's kind of how we set that initial line. Um, we do like to have our major public spaces uh bordered by streets, so they, again, appear very public. Um, so we always looked at kind of what was that secondary grid over there? Um, right now, where we are, um, we're kind of at the balance of the amount of land that the city can acquire through parkland dedication. Um, and so any additional land would be coming either through um geo borrowing or through um uh other sources. Um, so we we tend not to um go beyond what we can get in terms of
Thank you. Um, I think my last question or questions around the bike proposed bike network. Um, I remember what page that was on. Yeah, that one there. Um, so I I guess there's one quick comment, kind of, um, one thing I'd like us to start to do with our plans uh for transportation elements of our plans is to get away from um showing paths and routes and really start to uh dial in on low-stress, low-stress facilities. Uh, those could be a combination of off-street paths or on-street facilities, but I think, um, you know, a lot of the work that we're about to engage on in related to complete streets and what we know about promoting biking um really has to do with providing low-stress facilities, and I think that needs to be, and that is our adopted policy right now. Um, so when I look at this, uh I think clearly the the green lines uh would would meet that bar of a low-stress facility. Um, I believe many of the red lines may uh may not, but it's sort of hard to tell here. And then there's a lot of the streets um that are proposed within the planning area really don't have any markings at all in terms of what they, what they would be like for long bikes. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to, uh, provide a little bit more detail in terms of what the actual, uh, proposed bike accommodations would, within the planning area.
So, so one of the things, um, and I'll start with that last point. One of the things that, uh, we don't necessarily want to do is put the wrong facility in the wrong locations, because if we put bike lanes everywhere, especially on very low-volume streets, all we're doing is unnecessarily widening the street, which creates additional stormwater, uh, less space for, um, tree, uh, street trees, uh, and encourages cars to go faster. Um, and so that's kind of one of our cautions about saying putting bike lanes everywhere. When
That, that's not what I'm suggesting, and maybe, um, maybe something that could be followed up with some of the DOT staff later, but my, my point actually was sort of the opposite, that focusing on low-stress facilities deals with the context of the street so that we you said we don't want to put bike lanes on a low-volume street that doesn't require bike lane. It could be low-stress. Should be a low-stress facility. And whether, and then showing, hey, this is a, this is a low-volume local street with, you know, estimated motor vehicle volumes of packs. And so it would not, it would qualify as a low-stress bike facility without any bike, et cetera, but the way that it's laid out, it really doesn't, it doesn't do that. And so if I look in the middle of the, of the plan there, I see a great new path along the rail corridor, and then there's a red dot dash line on Coolidge. What, what is that? What is that going to look like? Are we saying there's not, we're going to have a break in the low-stress bike network then? So you're gonna, people are gonna have to get onto a, you know, regular bike lane. I'll look for a little bit on Coolidge to continue on the path there. Um, you know, what does Ruskin to Huxley look like? That could potentially be relatively high volume if we have the density that we're talking about. That gonna have no, what does that look like? So I guess I'm just, I wanted to be clear that I'm not asking that every, it shows bike lanes. But we're not, we don't really, in here about what the rest of the bike network is gonna look like.
Sure, a- and we, we do envision, you know, all the facilities to be as comfortable as possible. So, like, looking at, for example, Commercial Avenue, right now, we're currently, there are bike lanes on there. When we're looking at redeveloping that entire frontage, you know, does an off-street path there make sense? And part of the reason why we have to show off-street paths is we need to be able to, um, basically request that when the development proposals come in. You know, historically, we've looked at those as kind of the back
Uh, turn your phone call.
Hi, Tom, you're not muted. Um, the, um, so we look at those as really carrying the majority of the, of the traffic and looking at local streets that are comfortable um, as kind of those secondary facilities. What we tried to do in the plan is think about parallel routes that are kind of one block off the arterials as the primary neighborhood bike routes, similar to what we do with uh, our bike boulevards or other shared streets. Um, you know, whether they're a shared street or have some expanded, more comfortable facility, we don't know. Uh, we don't know how much right-of-way we have at the current time. Um, we typically know we're working with sixty-six feet. But sometimes we do need to customize that once we see the exact proposal that developers are bringing forward and seeing how we can get the land use and transportation systems to work together.
So I guess I'll just end with a, a comment that I, I think there's more work that needs to be done on this. If, you know, I, I love that you're showing that facility on that section commercially described, for example, but then it ends at the railroad tracks and turns into a, a not low-stress route. Why wouldn't we, that connecting to the new future path that you're showing along the rail corridor on the west side of the, the plan?
That's, that's a great observation. I think that's something we can definitely add. It's probably an omission more than a, um, than anything.
Yeah, there's, there's many like that, so I guess I, I don't, you know, I don't know if you're feeling like this is the last version or if this is still, um, open to tweaks before it's brought in front of the council, but I, I really think there's more to happen to, to better clarify the low-stress bike routes in there.
I mean, I, I think if you have ideas, the thing that would be most helpful for us is to incorporate those into your, your motion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next person in the queue is Baltazar, uh, and then followed by Alder Abbas. So, uh, Baltazar, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, we can.
So thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for, to the staff to, for, for working on this. Uh, Dan, would you mind, eh, talking a little bit more about that? Eh, I was a little bit, eh, taken aback when you mentioned, eh, one of the reasons why we needed to have traffic, and maybe I misunderstood. One of the reasons why we needed to have traffic through Coolidge Street or to open Coolidge Street is to eh, lessen the crime rate. Eh, anyways, you can just go back because I, yeah.
Yeah, and I, it's, again, I think it's part of a combination of trying to keep track of my notes in multiple screens. Uh, so this is all new for everybody. Um, well, the point I was trying to make is that, um, a, a grid-based network works really well. It's, it's been tried and true. It, it weathers all sorts of neighborhood phases really well. Um, what we do know is where we have isolated areas, those tend to, um, be more susceptible to problems. Uh, social issues, crime. Um, and there, there is some of that on Coolidge. Will this cure that? No. Could it, could it lead to future, uh, you know, having some level of more activity in the neighborhood that sometimes comes with um, an additional, you know, having it be a local traffic route for neighborhood residents, sometimes that's enough to um, discourage that opportu-, you know, the, that activity by having, uh, more residential eyes on the street. Um, and that, that's, that's a fairly well, um, adopted principle of crime prevention through environmental design strategies. We do know, yeah, that there, there is a house that has some issues. They have been speeding in the neighborhoods. Um, that's, that's an issue. We wish it wasn't, but it is, and it's something that I, I believe the police department is working to resolve.
Thank you very much for, 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 for that. I think, you know, I just, I just go back to the idea that there are many other more affluent neighborhoods in our area that do not have, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, some of the rich areas in, in Madison that eh, they want to stay far away from the community, you know, and, and sometimes I kind of get, I think, when, when we talk about, you know, when, when, when you gave that explanation, it, it, it doesn't, I cannot help by going back to, you know, is, is that gonna solve the issue? You know, is that, eh, you know, by putting that, is that gonna lessen the crimes? Eh, you know, I think, eh, there are some neighborhoods who want to stay on their own, separate from, from, from the city, you know? Eh, and we have very, very rich neighborhoods in Madison who, who, who want to do that and enjoy being there. So anyway, I think I, I was just a little bit surprised then, though you mentioned that that's a very typical way of describing, eh, an area, et cetera. You know, I think it's, eh, you know, I, I, I went to that neighborhood and, you know, I, I biked through, through, through some of the streets. Eh, you know, I just, I was just a little bit taken aback by, you know, the explanation about, you know, crime reduction in connection to opening a street.
Yeah, a- and again, probably my apologies for communicating that, um, not so eloquently. Um, you know, I, I freak, you know, I, uh, actually run on Coolidge fairly regularly. Um, very familiar with the street. Um, I am a resident of, uh, Emerson, so, um, um, yes.
And then, eh, the, the other thing, you know, so I was surprised about all the pushback from the neighborhood and, and that Coolin, eh, street. You know, I think one of the things that Madison has been done very good over the year, or try, try to do good, is the community engagement. You know, I was just a little bit taken aback by, you know, I think if, by doing that community engagement, I was surprised that the majority of the folks were against this.
And sure.
You know, kind of like, eh, because we in Madison, we saw, you know, we, 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 I think you did twenty sessions and, and nobody's gonna be ever happy. Eh, but I was just a little bit surprised that even though there was that community engagement, you know, that that many, many folks in that neighborhood, you know, maybe, you know, they, eh, eh, it just tells me that, you know, maybe they were not part of that engagement, or if they were part of that engagement, may, maybe they were not heard. I don't know.
They, they certainly were part of that engagement. We, um, we proactively reached out to the Ekin Park Neighborhood Association multiple times. Um, we did meet with them at least twice. Um, one of the things that we like to do, though, again, is, is tie, a lot of these, um, policies, uh, are coming from our adopted plans, so from our comprehensive plans. Um, that gives us guidance as to, again, recommending very highly interconnected neighborhoods, preventing or, um, really highly discouraging isolated neighborhoods. Um, because we, we do believe we are a community of neighborhoods. Um, and those, those arterials shouldn't necessarily be the barrier where one community stops and the next neighborhood picks up. Um, we certainly understand their concerns. Um, I will say that I've never been to a meeting and had someone say, I need more, I would like you to put more traffic on my street. But we do know that there are people in Ekin Park, there are supporters of the Coolidge collection. Um, there have been some of you probably seen in your, in your, um, emails today. Uh, Alder Boss has also sent some of that, those out to us in the past. Um, even those living directly on Coolidge that have been impacted by some of the issues resulting from those speeding and the accidents, uh, they've reached out to us and say they support it. Certainly not everybody. I would not say it's the majority, but they are, they are there.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work that you guys do.
Thank you, Baltazar. Alder Abbas.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, before I ask question, I quickly want to talk about public engagement. I think so is excellent question. Yes, City Stop did quite a bit of public engagement. As Alder of the district, I organized several meetings, one adding Bus Bond project at Oscar Myer location at, at Wander Park. Then for the Coolidge on January fifteenth or sixteenth, hundred people attended that about special area plan, and there was a substantial amount of feedback. The frustration, I think, so one of the co-chair during her comments, what she mentioned is when they talk about Coolidge Street, there was only one proposal, four-way, which is in this plan, there was no options to discuss. That's why I think so the frustration start between neighbors. When they engage with the city and the city does not really listen or propose options and start dialogue, it was more like, this is a plan we, we are proposing. If you do not agree, come to the Transportation Commission, and that's what we are here. I'm not throwing city stuff under the bus, but I'm just creating clarity and telling you the reality, what happened. And that's what the people want, option and the process. Having said that, uh, I'm glad we are all here and discussing this in detail, and, uh, before then, I will come to a question. I appreciate all the work. I think so overall plan, there's a lot of good things in this plan, but to make it more inclusive, I think so we also need to accommodate the community feedback and find best solutions around it. So, uh, I will read an email, uh, for a reference for the, all the commissioner and orders on this, um, commission. On this email, I wrote an email to Tao Yang and, uh, Tom Lynch, uh, Smith Brian and Siann, they were CC'ing on this email. And this email was written on, uh, I got replied back on February ten, three P M. And I'm going to read only one paragraph, which is, I think, so important for this commission to hear. We also met, and when we say we also met Tao and the Engineering Department Traffic. We also met with our Planning Division colleagues on the proposed intersection at Packer Coolidge and requested that the intersection not be automatically signalized. In bracket, signalize means signalize when it meets the national warrant. And that we consider an intersection design that can support the development and through pedestrian bike traffic, but not through automobile traffic on Coolidge to reduce cut-to traffic in the neighborhood. That's the email I have, and I can forward that happily. Dan, my question to you is this, when you propose, when Planning Star was working on this intersection on Coolidge, how much input did they receive from traffic engineering from Tao and Tom Lynch? Uh, please let, let us know.
Sure. Um, no, we, we vet all of our, uh, development concepts with all the planning, all related departments. So transportation, uh, stormwater, engineering, parks, we work very closely with other areas. Um, you know, we brought it up and we, we explained what we were trying to do, um, as, as respective. We don't see the opportunity or the demand creation for non-neighborhood-oriented traffic. Um, that certainly, we understand that, um, when you open up an intersection, there could be concerns that all of a sudden it's the new road. Um, it's a road. Um, but it was never intended to be a replacement for commercial. It was never intended to be, um, uh, you kind of a new link to East Washington. Um, it's, it's a neighborhood street serving neighborhood residents. Um, we understand that, you know, street connections, when they're proposed, they are, um, oftentimes not popular. Um, but we also know that, you know, going back to, um, what city residents said collectively in the comprehensive plan, as in past plans. Uh, city residents have said, we believe having connected neighborhoods is important. Um, um, certainly, we, we believe in minimizing, um, non-local traffic through our neighborhoods. We think we were accomplishing that with the recommendations. Um, so we brought them. Um, I think everybody was aware that, um, it would be somewhat contentious. Um, but I don't believe that there was any, um, strong concern from a traffic perspective. Tom, if you would.
Yeah, I, I want to hear from Tom, like, what recommendation did the traffic engineering provide to the Plan Commission regarding this particular intersection?
Um, I think we echo, um, what a lot of what Dana said, that generally grids are good planning practice. That, um, Packers Avenue is kind of an a strange situation in that you have literally a half mile of freeway bounded by two urban streets. And so our desire would be to have, um, all of Packers Avenue to be an urban street rather than having a freeway section in the way you, um, create an urban street as you introduce, um, access. Now, the access there could be, um, a variety of things. Uh, it could be a signalized access, but, um, there's also ways to have limited access where you would do a, uh, limit access to right in, right out, and sometimes left in. And those types of intersections, um, often don't require signalization and they prevent the two most difficult movements. Uh, one would be, uh, a through crossing movement as well as a through left movement. Um, those could be explored, uh, kind of at the time when you, when we understand what the demand is, you know, is there you know, what, what are the demands, but that will, a, a limited access intersection would be an appropriate option. A signalized intersection would also be an appropriate option.
I'm just gonna put up the, the intersection at Livingston that we had shown as a possible example intersection at our January open house. So, um, as you, I don't know if you can see my cursor, um, but, uh, eastbound traffic can go right in, right out on Livingston. Uh, you'd get a, uh, from westbound tra- or westbound traffic, you could do a left in. Um, so that does control the cross movement. Um, it could certainly effectively, um, you know, if you're concerned about, um, traffic coming from Oscar Myer being prevented into, uh, going into Ekin Park, this, this accomplishes that.
I, I, I get your point. I just want to, in this particular example, you can see all the four corners are commercial, not residential.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, anyhow, uh, uh, thank you very much. My second question is, and this is also something, uh, I will, I will discuss in detail once we go up, once we are done with this question answer process. But I think it's important to ask this question at this point regarding Hartmire. So right now, the Hartmire, on February sixteenth, I believe, fourteenth or sixteenth, they, they sue the nine-one-zero, I believe, Mayor LLC and Kraftheim. Oscar Myer, formerly known as Oscar Myer, they sue them on environmental contamination basis. And that particular legal document, if my memory serves me right, there are six, seven different type of contamination allegation which they found in their soil, where we are which they found in their soil, where we are proposing housing at the moment. My question is, when we are proposing those housing and as city, we still, I am, I don't know if cities still know what type of contaminations are there? And if we are running through the roads and constructing buildings there, disturbing the soil and and contamination, whose responsibility would be to investigate uh what type of contamination is there? What are the uh, what is the remedy to solve it, including groundwater? And and throughout when we put roads and building, if it's moved, who will pay for this?
Uh, so if that, those are private uh development issues. So um the city would not be responsible for um um cleanup, um unless we own the property uh or we are contributing to its contamination. So if if the Hartmire property is suing Oscar Meyer, because they are trying to recover costs associated with cleanup of their property. Um, certainly, if we acquire it, we will be directly responsible for those cleanup costs. Um, those, um, those uh um, if, for example, we are proposing, um, you know, or not even, I was even saying we are proposing. If the plan provides guidance for private developers to develop along that, they are responsible for their cleanup costs as well as the additional infrastructure associated with building those roads. So it would not fall on the city.
So the park land which we'll acquire, we have to clean the contamination then?
Uh, they would need, they have to dedicate that, um, that's an interesting wrinkle. I haven't thought about this. My gut tells me that they would need to clean up the parkland before they dedicate it to us. Um, because why would, there would be no reason why we would take an asset uh that's really a liability, that we would have to then pay to clean up. Um, they should be responsible for cleaning up the property prior to dedicating it to the city. And then unless of course that is, we acquire, then then it all falls on us.
All right, I have a question for Tom Lynch. But, Tom, I, we saw the bike path along the railway line. And historically, we know railway line have oil contamination. We're putting a bike path there, and we don't know what type of contaminations are there, with some with the M G. And we are proposing right along the bike, biking, right around the bike, uh, the rail path. Who will be responsible for that contamination and who will pay for it?
Yeah, um, so I can't give you a a black and white answer. Um, you know, we are investigating the Oscar Meyer purchase, and there's a variety of contaminants. And um, right now, we are developing provisions for the letter of, you know, to minimize the risk to the city and um and actually kind of manage the risk to the city. And so that can either be done by asking others to uh Reich Raven to clean up that, to use escrow funds, those types of things. Uh, generally, I'm speak, you know, I actually, I could speak out of my league, but I think I'm gonna stop myself. You know, we have a, we, uh, we are working very closely with Brendan Bemis, and she's really kind of our environmental oil scientist for the city, and she's very aware of all these issues, uh, is looking at the reports and meeting with us on a weekly basis as we try and manage the risk.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dan, one more question, and then uh I I won't ask anymore. Uh, so during this transit, we are connecting roads, and I I actually like this idea of connecting Oscar Meyer, especially for biking and pedestrian from Coolidge rather than um driving through cars. But when you connect um uh Oscar Meyer to, uh, I believe Roth Street, there is already existing Canadian Pacific Railroad Crossing. In your proposal planning, you are using a different crossing.
That's correct.
So my discussion with people who already worked in, and some people are also get retired from Canadian Pacific Railroad Crossing, and they told me uh from nineteen seventies or eighties, they're always trying to reduce railway road crossing, and it's extremely hard to create new one. If you're proposing another one next, like, the idea is to move, they consider as a new one. Have you ever talked with Canadian Pacific Railroad Crossing before you make that proposal? Like, how will this whole thing work?
Uh, we, well, to answer the question, no, we have not talked to them. Uh, it is not, it's my understanding, it's not Canadian Pacific's decision, it's the decision of the Office of the Commissioner of Railroads. Um, that is a state position, um, not a railroad position. So um, one of our thoughts was, it's always better to have an adopted plan that says what we think is in the city's best interest, that is what makes uh Oscar Meyer effectively work as an economic engine. Let's get that system in place prior to asking. I'm saying this is what we need, this is what we need to make um Oscar Meyer, the rejuvenation of Oscar Meyer and the economic benefits to the city and the state happen. Um, I also believe this is a relatively um unique situation where there's a lot of statewide eyes looking on this. Um, there's gonna be a lot of encouragement um from the state. We already know the state's giving them money um to help succeed the the redevelopment to succeed. Um, if they believe, if we believe um having the crossing at Roth Street is what makes sense, um, it would seem the state would be shooting themselves in the foot to say no to a detail that creates a lot of problems in it. Um, we don't know the answer. Um, we know we don't have it fully in our control, but we do believe uh because there is an existing crossing, we'd effectively be creating a new crossing and closing another. And closing a crossing uh is one of the factors that they look favorably on when you are applying for a new crossing.
All right, I, and one last thing I will ask about bike question, bike path, and and later in during discussion, I would like to get all the grant opinion on it as he he knows bike path more than me. So as Alder of the district, I know Demetrol Park, Demetrol Park Bike Path stops there, it's a dead end. Then what people are at the moment, what they are doing, they cross the road, they go to, what is the new road, the Packers Avenue Boulevard, I believe?
Oscar Avenue?
Oscar Avenue, thank you very much. What they do, they use Oscar Avenue, they drive all the way north and go on A Bug and cross through there. The proposed bike path is, and I have a lot of concern with that bike path because it's around railway road crossing, and I have concern, I don't know railway road will allow you, how much contamination, how many partners are involved there, including M G E, Hooper Corporation on part of that side. So many negotiation, because I am doing as an order negotiation with the QuickTrip right now to fix the Demetrol Park Bike Path with Anderson East, and you ask me how hard it is to do that negotiation because we don't have any legal authority. And it's a small part, really small part, and it's, it makes so much sense to connect, but it's such a big struggle. So coming back to the bike path, right now, that's the existing path people are using. In your plan, why you guys did not consider using Oscar Boulevard rather than taking the bike path all the way on a railway road crossing?
Before you answer that, um, could I get a couple more members, or at least one more, to um turn their cameras on, it's difficult to confirm quorum, and right now, I can only see four, including myself. Thank you, I appreciate that. No, not not your fault, Alder Abbas, I just needed to take care of that. Um, go ahead, Dan.
Uh, I just wanna confirm, was this question directed to me or to Alder Foster?
No, this is for you, later I will get his input on it. It's a good question.
Uh, so one of the things that we do with our plans, um, is they do anticipate change. And and so certainly, I could understand the difficulty of getting a bike path through QuickTrip because they are not seeking any change. They just wanna continue their operations, they have no motivation. Um, when we have the property along, uh, certainly along the bike or the rail corridor, um, M G E has an outlaw that they've um given, uh, they haven't confirmed it, but they've said, yeah, that seems like it'd be a reasonable thing. Um, that takes up the majority of the length. We know Hooper is for sale. Um, that could certainly see redevelopment, with redevelopment comes a city approval. That gives us a mechanism to request or require um dedication of that bike path. Uh, Oscar Meyer, certainly, we anticipate change happening there. Um, so we we see that that kind of string of properties with potential changes. That gives us uh certainty that we will be able to acquire these pieces. And certainly, we understand that, you know, plans look very long term. Um, we do not necessarily say, the the plans don't say, we will have this connection in twenty twenty-two. Um, but it does give us direction um and and kind of a pathway of of achieving in the future.
Thanks, no more question.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Okay, are there any, okay, one here moment, Alder Campbell, go ahead.
Yeah, not sure who this is a question for. Um, Yang's not here, so maybe Tom? So for years and years and years, and as you made reference to, the intersection at Six and Packers slash Pennsylvania has been, um, I mean, it is a really unsafe intersection, especially for pets and bikes, and there are a lot of pets and bikes that that cross that intersection. And we have asked for a signal there for, you know, a long time, many years, and we were always told you can't put a signal there because it's too close to Commercial Avenue. It's it's too, it's in too close proximity to Commercial. And by the look of the map, that Coolidge is closer, if not, you know, as close, if not closer, to Commercial to the north. So um also, when you um read out the stats about twenty-one hundred cars, did you say go through that intersection? Tom, was that twenty-one hundred?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so that, I mean, as you probably know, that that intersection is the end of a cut-through from directly from East Wash. Many, many cars use that just to get from East Wash to the north side. Um, that would not be the case for Coolidge. This, that is not, Sixth Street is really, it's kind of a de facto arterial in a way. Um, that's how people use it, and it's really different in character from from Coolidge. So I guess if um someone could address that issue of the proximity to Commercial Ave. And in in the case of Coolidge, it's that close to both Commercial and Aver.
Need to be, okay, I'm unmuted.
So, one of the things that we did notice, um, certainly, um, and I've probably mentioned this before, um, East Washington is also a major route. Um, we do know that block spacing or intersection spacing, or actually, it says a signal spacing on East Wash between the Capitol and Highway fifty-one averages quarter mile. Um, right now, intersection or traffic signal spacing uh on Packers Avenue, you have one at First Street and the next Commercial, and then International. So we're, we have mile spacing. Um, and I I I don't know exactly what went on with the discussions about intersection spacing. Um, certainly, there are preferred intersection spacing that are probably about a quarter mile, uh, we're close. Um, uh, we'd certainly try to work with that. Um, but if you look at East Wash, like, um, they're four hundred feet, five hundred feet apart. Um, but it's.
Yeah, I I think generally, uh, you know, a nice signal spacing is between eight hundred and twelve hundred feet. Um, I guess I really don't understand perhaps what traffic engineering would have said previously. Um, because I think perhaps the outlook of it agency might change over time. Um, I think we do like to satisfy warrants because otherwise, um, we just would have double the number of traffic signals that we have now. But if it appears like there'd be at least twelve hundred foot spacing, so it doesn't seem, I don't see anything there that would include it or prevent it.
The other thing that I would add is, it, you know, kind of going back to the confusion as to whether this is a local jurisdiction or state. Um, as you've probably seen through the process, um, there tends to be a fear of um, what if the state says no? Um, and and so certainly, we are open for, you know, having an adopted plan uh with what we think really makes sense, uh, can move in the needle in the right direction.
That being said, I I believe that we have control over this roadway. Some roadways we don't, as in Southern Road and the Beltline, we do not have control over. Uh, East Washington, we have a large amount of control over, and this would fall in the same connecting road.
Alder Campbell, did that answer your question?
I'm muted.
Okay, am I muted now?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, uh, for me, it's a much bigger priority and something we could do soon to signalize Packard, to signalize Sixth Street. That would, that would be, that would um really improve the quality and safety of life for people in that neighborhood and who use use that crossing. And I know it's, I know it's right at the point, the southern tip-ish of this plan, but um I feel like that is, that's a priority.
So every year, we have a traffic signal priority list, and we signalize between one and two intersections a year. And so we can look at, look at it study.
Right, but now with this, with this plan, this plan is basically saying, oh, that that Coolidge intersection doesn't have to go through that process because it's in the plan. Right? So when this other, this other one that has been, that people have been lobbying for for years is not prioritized because it falls, it it has to go through that other process.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure that this plan is uh stating that necessarily. Um, sometimes in situations like this, particularly if this uh is involved, the developer would be responsible for um contributing towards this cost of the signal. Oftentimes, uh, signal costs are assessed, for instance, there's a new signal at um the Blount Street and Williamson Street, you know, that's traffic signal was assessed, that is the benefiting commercial properties. But, you know, I don't think that that's necessarily true. I think we would want signal warrants, some type of signal warrants to be met at Coolidge.
Okay, and I have, sorry, go ahead and finish, I just wanna let the chair know I have questions on another.
Uh, the other thing that, the plan is not saying that the Coolidge intersection should occur right now. Um, it's recognizing the need for an intersection that will be sign, that should be signalized when in concurrent with the redevelopment of Oscar Meyer. So if they're not ready for it yet, um, I wouldn't say this is prioritizing that over Six. I say they are, um, one is associated with the development that happens frequently. We frequently add signals with developments. Uh, the other is a recognition of fixing a problem that does exist.
Alder Campbell, did you have additional questions?
Okay, yeah, um, questions about the um environmental analysis. So um for the parts of the the site that we are looking to purchase, can you say, um, Tom, what invest, I mean, I know you saying you're working with engineering on this, but can you say specifically what investigations have been done of the types and levels of contaminants and the and the various parts of the site, but particularly for the parts that we are looking to purchase?
Um, I I I could, um, you know, some or oh, and ask me to say a bunch of words that I don't know how to pronounce. So, uh, hold on. So there's um seven to nine of different um issues on the portion that we're trying to purchase. White Raven is working with um the D N R to clothe all of them. Uh, types of contaminants include VOCs, a PFAS, and polyvinyl chloride. And so, um, so this is an industrial property. And so what we want to do is we want to, for our portion, we want to match an appropriate use with with the type of property that it is and manage to seize risk. You know, if. You know, if, yeah, so it if we were to purchase something on the outskirts, you know, towards Cottage Grove, it would be a clean piece of property, but it's very far away. This, this is urban, it's a former industrial site, and there's stuff there. Some of it's relatively minor, like 75 gallons of hydraulic oil from an elevator. You know, and that just needs a rather routine cleanup. Others are undetermined yet. We've done a phase one, the owner has done phase two, and we're interacting back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there a motion? Please use the hand raise. I'm sorry, there was one more, I missed that. Or it went down and came back up. Go ahead, Alder Abbas.
I do not have a question, but I do have, I want to talk about a few things. So I, I was not sure in the process is question answer is over. Are we not, yes, we have to do a motion first, and then we have to start communication. My bad.
Yes, okay. All right, is there a motion? Eric.
Um, I move approval of the plan with an amendment that text be added that states that the goal of the Coolidge-Packers interchange is to permit bike and pet access through all movements, but to limit the exposure of the Eagan Park neighborhood to potential new through traffic.
Could you repeat it for me one more time? I couldn't quite get it all down.
Yeah, sorry, I almost emailed it to you, but it's with the, the amendment is to add text that says the goal of the intersection at Coolidge and Packers is to permit bike and safe bike and pet crossings across all movements, but to limit new cut through traffic in Eagan Park.
Actually, yeah, if you could shoot that to me in an email, that would be beneficial. Is there a second?
If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Yeah. Alder Foster?
I'll just
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, so we've had quite a bit of discussion about this before, and the questions that we asked were kind of leading questions, so I won't go through this all again. I, I think, I do want to commend city staff for coming up with a plan that does a lot of good in pursuit of the goals in our comp plan, other goals in our goals and aspirations in the city around compact, sustainable development. Dan gave a good presentation about why that is. We've kind of gone back and forth about that in the questions. But the greater connectivity, the location by transit, the sensible levels of density, the inclusion of some additional green space, which wasn't in there before, which was a response to feedback, potentially maybe tweaking this intersection. I, I think staff has listened and provided their good professional judgment on what's the, in the, in the greater good and the greater interest. And I think this plan is, I think this is a really good plan overall. We could argue about potential parts of it. Others might have issues with some other things that I don't, but I do want to speak for the merits of, of the greater density. I actually think maybe staff added too much of the green space back in. And I'm sorry, I know people are in good faith, really think that having a, this, this green space restored would be, you know, a, a big improvement. And in a way, in the very local area, maybe it would be, but for the area's whole, for Metro Madison and driving up the additional mileage driven and so forth, I just don't, I just don't see it. This is too critical a place for us to have development to, to put in a new urban park when our parks survey showed that we already had adequate service of park there and so forth. So I hope that people will support it. Our, our main goal at TPPB is to look at transportation policy. Driving and motor vehicles are the number one source of carbon emissions in the country and in our state and area. So that should really be top of mind, and anything that helps us reduce that burden on, on ourselves and future generations really will go a long way to adding to sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Alder Furman.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if I can get some sort of clarification. I assume limit, limit does not mean prohibit. It just means that when this is actually figured out, that we're asking staff to do, you know, to look at the, some of the different options that we talked about this evening. I don't know if Eric can answer that question.
Yes, Alder, that's my intent. I think it would be presumptuous to design it here in real time. Stating the goals rather than the actual design of it is mine, is the way I thought we should handle it.
I, I appreciate your motion very much. Thank you.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I'm largely supportive of Eric's motion as well. I have two additional recommendations that I'd like to have considered. I don't know kind of process wise, I would like to handle those.
Hold on a moment. I guess you could ask if there are friendly amendments?
Well, so I'll, I'll put them out there, I guess, and then, so one would be recommend updating the transportation map to show recommended, recommended low stress bike routes within the planning area. And to include the recommended facility, facility type for those low stress bike routes. What I had talked about with Dan.
So it doesn't sound like that's really a, an amendment to the motion, but just maybe a request from staff?
No, it's, so I, again, I don't, I mean, typically, this would be basically an additional recommendation as part of, maybe I move it as an amendment to add this as a, an additional recommendation, and the body can debate and vote on that, and then we could do it for the second one as well.
Okay. So would you say your motion one more time then?
Yeah, so I would like to add a recommendation that the transportation map in the plan is updated to include the recommended low stress bike routes within the planning area.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Discussion, Alder Foster, do you wish to speak further to your
Yeah, thank you. I won't make anybody pull the map back up, but one of the things that we really need to get a handle on for in terms of our bike work is we need to get to the place where we're thinking of it the same way we think about pedestrian access. And so in this map, you know, you may or may not have noticed that all the streets that are being proposed in there, they didn't actually call out specific sidewalks on all those streets. I think we all probably assume that they're all going to get sidewalks when those are built, and we would expect that as normal. Sidewalks are the low stress walking facilities that we provide. They don't, you don't have to build sidewalks on low stress streets. We could, we could actually have low stress walking in some areas without sidewalks, but we basically put them everywhere. We need to shift our thinking so that when we're doing a planning area like this, every transportation corridor should also accommodate safe, low stress biking. And so the way that that happens looks different if it's an arterial or a collector or a local street, but we have not been including that in our plans. And so I think it'd be really important to, ideally, every street that's in here would be colored as part of a low, expected and planned low stress bike network. Some of those would not require any additional facility aside from the street itself. Others could be satisfied with a shared use path running along the side, or others might have on-street biking. But I think it's important in our planning documents to show that that's what we're looking for in this area.
So Alder Abbas, did you want to speak to this amendment? Or did you want to speak to the main motion?
Main motion.
Okay. All right, I'll hold off then. Any discussion on the sub, or on the secondary motion that's before us, which is to update the transportation map to show the low stress bike networks? Robert, go ahead.
I would just second Alder Foster's ideas on that topic. So second that motion or
Thank you. All right. So I have any further discussion on that? Seeing no new hands. All those in favor say I oppose, no, the clerk will call a roll. I'll unmute you all now.
Altazar?
Yes.
Christopher?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Grant?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Rebecca?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Tom? Oh, you're not voting, and Audrey's not voting, okay. Unanimous.
And then if I could, I'll move the second amendment to add a recommendation to include an implementation plan slash timeline for the transportation element of the plan.
Is there a second? Please raise your hand. Or I'm sorry, raise the, raise the hand on the, I see you, Eric, but Okay, so Eric, Eric Sunquist, second. Alder Foster, would you like to speak to your
Yeah, it's, again, it's something I think we should start doing routinely with all of our, all the plans that we're creating and adopting. I think Alder Campbell raised some good questions around the Sixth Street intersection, for example, which, yes, we've been asking for for many years. It shows up in this plan. While some of the elements of the plan are obviously going to require development before they occur, we're not going to just go and put the streets in and do some of these other facilities. I think there are a number of features in the transportation element that we could be pursuing prior to any additional development. By I think having a list of what the, the recommended changes in the transportation network are within the planning area and grouping them by saying, this is something that we would recommend, the DOT and engineering, you know, look to address, and then two to five-year time period, these are items that should wait until a certain parcel is developed, et cetera. So I think the Sixth Intersection is one example of that. Looking to add some buffered lanes or a side path on Commercial. There's, I think there's several items in there that should be on a shortlist of things that are on, that get incorporated into our transportation work that we're already
Any discussion? Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I actually wanted to just ask Dan, what would it take to do something like that? And if there are any concerns with us adding that?
Raise your hand, Dan, so I can find you more quickly. Where are you? All right, it's jumping around on me. All right, go ahead, Dan, you should be unmuted.
I, I think it'd be a fairly easy add. I think we would probably look at a table, or create a table with the individual projects. For example, the off-street bike paths, and try to classify whether or not those are whether or not they are contingent upon development occurring. Certainly, the ones that aren't contingent upon occurring, a lot of those would be at the recommendation of the Transportation Commission prioritizing certain expenditures. But it's certainly something that we could add to the document, I think.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Margaret.
Yeah, just a comment that I, I just find it somewhat mind blowing that we can get into this level of detail for the timing of construction of transportation facilities, et cetera, and the types of transportation facilities. When we haven't even answered the bigger questions of where are the brownfields, who are, who will be responsible? What is the timeline for cleaning up those? When might this property change hands? What of the wetlands? I, I'm, and what of the railroad crossings? The fact that we haven't even discussed this yet with the Office of the Rail Commissioner, I just find mind blowing. So just, just a comment that it seems like this plan is going into extraordinary detail on certain points, and then using such a broad brush on others that are fundamental to every part of this project.
Thank you, Margaret. Dan, I think you had your hand up. I'm trying to unmute you, there you go.
Sorry, that was just from before.
Okay. They're jumping around on me. Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the motion before us, which is to include an implementation timeline into the plan, is that correct, Alder Foster? I know I didn't quite get the wording perfect. That's the
Yeah, I think everybody's understanding.
Okay, excellent. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say I oppose, no, the clerk will call the roll. As soon as I unmute.
Altazar?
Oh, I'm sorry. Start again, please.
Chris?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Grant?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Rebecca?
Hi.
Margaret? Epstein? And Robert?
Hi.
Okay, that carries?
Yes.
All right, now back to the, the main motion, which is to, I guess, recommend adoption with the new included text of the Coolidge-Packers intersection will provide full pad bike, bike, pad access across Packers while minimizing any new cut through traffic in Eagan Park. Any further discussion? Alder Abbas? I'm sorry, I lowered your hand. If you're unmuted, it should be okay.
Yeah, no worries, thanks very much. What Margaret mentioned earlier and during a lot of those
Oops, you're muted.
There we go. All right. Can you hear me? Yes, yes, cool, thank you. So what Margaret mentioned earlier, and a lot of my questions in front of this commission, I asked intentionally to open those discussion. It's, it's really hard for me to, and I am also did not sponsor this Oscar Meyer special review of plan, it's very hard for me to accept a plan without knowing, so, without so much hidden or uncertainty, without knowing, like as an example, bike proposed bike path on a railway road based on assumption, tomorrow we have control, we do this and that. It might take decades, it might be one partner say, no, I don't want to give you the land. Might be railway road, say no. So it's like, and also, it, it creates, it's hard for me to really understand a plan when there are so many questions around it. Again, also, I, I respect this commission's opinion and emotion, but I have a stand on an environment, and that stand is, I am not against density. On a East Wash, we have, on Alice Deli, the project came, I supported the project, and with the density, I supported that because that's the place to be at. Huxley Street have affordable housing project, there's a several project in District 12, which, which I thought it's a great project. This particular land, which is full of contaminations, and God knows, I don't know what type of contaminations are there, and we are, we And we are, we are planning that place for housing on a contaminated land without knowing what will be under this land, how much it will cost, who will clean it. Of course, the city staff said, and I understand their point, it's a private land. But it's, we need to do our due diligence in a planning process without knowing Canadian Pacific Gate, will they allow us and not allow us? It's also, again, it's assumption-based. We don't know. So, so these are the things should be done ahead of a time. Some of, I know some of the things are private property. We don't have access to that as a hot mic. But some of those things with Canadian Pacific would be a good idea to know their strategy and policy before we do. We should also should look into a bike path to Oscar Avenue rather than going to and connect with the Emerson East rather than going through the railway line crossing and creating it more complex structure. I think it's really complex. I, I, I do believe this thirty-one acre land is a wildlife corridor. And that's what the neighbors believe. This is fifty, I have to check exact number, fifty-six bird species are there. I mean, the staff tried to compare this natural sanctuary with a park. And I, I have a hard time understanding this because in a park, Ekin Park, I live on a Coolie Street. I take my two little daughters to Ekin Park to play. We don't see sandhill cranes there. We don't see bluebird trail. We don't see red-tailed hawk there. There are, there are species which is really rare to see those species. You need to go Cherokee Marsh and to go Cherokee, Cherokee Marsh, I need to use my own car, carbon footprint. This place is accessible from equity point of view. You can bring school kids, you can bring community here and you can have, really enjoy the nature itself. There is a DNR document and I also sent a memo written by friends to all Alders. And there's a lot of detail why this is not a suitable location to construct a housing at wildlife corridor or sanctuary. And if we put fourteen-acre housing, only hard species will, will survive there. All other species will be gone, all of them gone. In this time of pandemic with, with COVID, people need more space, people need more calmness, they want to go out. I don't see this place as a park, as a green space where you come and mow the lawn and say, hey, here's a, here's a, here's a soccer field or cricket field or whatnot. I see this as a nature area which can get back on its natural habitat. We can use natural, natural plant to reduce contamination, oil base. And there are so many strategies. This area can be done one of its type in Madison and for the community. That's, that's my reason. I don't want to go more in detail because this commission is more discussing about transportation. Other commissions, I will go more in detail about hot mic. But, but that's sort of struggle I am having, having roads over there and, and just finishing all the ecosystem over there. And then about Coolie Street. So Ekin Park does not have a sidewalk. That's just for information. There's no sidewalk. There's only one sidewalk on a Coolie Street. There's no sidewalk on Ekin Park. Kids walk on a Coolie Street to get into the park. This neighborhood used to be historically attached with the Oscar Meyer and people used to work there. Now, for good or bad, this neighborhood has been changed and there's a young family because the houses are hundred sixty thousand dollars, hundred eighty, two hundred thousand dollars. Young family moves there with kids. There's substantial amount of kids here. People, when community reach out to me and, and they, they have a similar concern. You heard from the people, participants, they have a concern about, they have a kid, six-year-old kid, six-year-old kid going on a bicycle. They have concern about higher traffic. I, I understand the idea of grid connectivity by the city staff. I think so idea sounds really good. But if you really want to look at the grid connectivity, you have to look all Ekin Park. Not only a one part of Coolie Street and say, hey, that's a great grid connectivity. That will be great for the neighborhood. Guess what? The major part of the neighborhood is attached with Aberg Avenue. What about their grid connectivity? It's all Aberg Avenue. So anyhow, my point here is you have to see holistic picture as Alder Campbell mentioned. And I echo her that the particular intersection, Sixth Street, it's been in discussion for a long period of time. Shaklingan Avenue up north, you further go across Becker Avenue. That is a place I got so many complaints before me. Alder Larry Palm, my predecessor, had so many, got so many complaints about they want a light there, community want a light. They reach out to me. That intersection and Engineering Department, Tom Lynch is here, he knows. It's been in media several times. I asked city engineering to put a light, but I got a state forward, no, because that will hinder or reduce the, the traffic flow or some other reasons. I appreciate traffic engineering for mitigate, to do some mitigation around it. Putting a twenty-five zone there as a school because there's also private schools close by. Really appreciate that. But I have a really, the constituent come to me and they ask a state for a question. Well, you're having Oscar Meyer special area plan over here and you're getting a light at Coolidge. What about Shaklingan Avenue? And, and, and so we, when we think about, when we give an argument and say, hey, if we want to create this whole area more, we want to reduce the highway impact more kind of like a neighborhood type of area, then we have to see the whole corridor. We cannot only pick Coolidge and say, hey, we achieved the target. We need to see everything. And that's something I think so is very important for this commission to have this in a motion to ask city staff to review the whole corridor, not only Coolidge. And that's, I will, I will request that if, if, if that is possible to add as a friendly amendment. Thanks.
I'll mute myself here. Is there further discussion? Margaret, go ahead.
Well, yes, I guess first to ask the Alder if he would like to make that motion at this time regarding the grid connectivity, et cetera.
I think the motion has to come from a member of the board.
Ah. Okay. Well, I am terrible at writing motions on the fly. So I'm going to put my hand down for a second and try to think about this.
While Margaret's doing that, is there further discussion? I see Alder Foster. Go ahead.
I was just going to try and help out. So we did this with the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan as well. So I committed and added a recommendation that basically just said, recommend that Packers Avenue corridor study be pursued by DOT.
Margaret, does that sound agreeable?
No, I think that the Alder's suggestion went farther than that. I guess I would. And, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm struggling with this because I'm not interested in reconnecting these grids at this point. I think it's seventy years past time. You're not going to reconnect the grid to Aberg Avenue. You're not going to reconnect the grids across Packers Avenue. And quite frankly, especially if you're going to put a short timeline on these projects. I, I really don't think it's prudent to advise this. So at this moment, I'm going to just let this be and vote against it.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. On the, hold on a second, let me get everything up here. So on the motion to adopt the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan as a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan with the recommendation of the Cooler Packet, Coolidge-Packers Intersection provide full ped bike access across Packers while minimizing any new cut-through traffic in Ekin Park and recommending that the transportation map be updated to show a low-stress bike network. And that the plan included implementation timeline. Those in favor say I, opposed, no. The clerk will call the roll.
Please, no.
Altazar?
Yeah.
Hi.
That's very good to see you.
Yes.
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Eric? Grant?
Hi.
Grant? Keith?
Hi.
Rebecca?
No.
Margaret?
No. Margaret?
Robert?
Yes.
Robert?
Six eyes and two noes.
Okay, that motion carries? Okay, moving on. Our next item, Legisstar five-nine-nine-seven-three, amending the timeline for the final, for final staff. Team recommendations on parking policies is adopted by RES dash one-nine-dash-zero-zero-three-two-one, Legisstar file ID five-four-nine-six-one on four sixteen, twenty nineteen. Who will be speaking or presenting about this one? Remember to raise your hand so I can find you quickly, Tom. Go ahead.
I think also if you could unmute Sabrina.
Gotcha. I see her and there now. Should be unmuted, Sabrina.
Good. I'll let Sabrina just give a quick summary and then I'll fill in any holes if she has.
Okay, great. So the district is really just to amend the timeline of a resolution passed last April, which is for a staff team to study on-street parking, a number of issues, including residential parking, new development and parking demand. And since that, there was work done, the staff has met several times, I believe Tom has presented update over the past few months on, on this progress. And then a number of staff across the departmental team joined the Bloomberg Harvard Innovation Team and was working on, on related issues with PDM and, and transportation in general with the city. So when this was drafted, we were looking to really take advantage of what might be learned through that process. And we've done the research that that team is doing to include with this work. And since then, in the last couple of months with COVID, that the project has been put on a hold for a couple of months. But we are moving forward with an intern that we're going to be receiving from Harvard, who's going to be assigned with working on this project and specifically with a TOD overlay and implementation of what that would look like to, to bring a draft policy forward for this board and, and others to review. And I think with that, I'll let Tom fill in any other information. But then this would push that timeline for final approval and come back April of twenty twenty-one. So really just moving that deadline back a year.
Just the intern that we'll have is Turuvi. She's getting a master's in transportation planning. She's got a pretty impressive resume. Her task will be implementation-oriented, develop the parameters for a TOD overlay policy and then help us with the RP three to RPO. Those are two things that the board has been anxious to implement. And so hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll be able to provide products for the board's agenda to move through the process.
Thank you, Tom. And Sabrina, questions for staff? Please use the handraise feature. Seeing no questions for staff? Is there a motion? Robert? I'm in trouble unmuting people, but it appears that moved by Robert and maybe seconded by Alder Foster.
Sorry, for some reason I was muted. This is Robert. I, yes, I did make the motion to amend the timeline about, by about a year.
Thank you. And Alder Foster, was that a second?
Yep.
Okay, discussion. Lower your hands here.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, seeing none. On the motion to amend the, recommend amending the stat, the timeline for final staff team recommendations on parking policies is adopted by RES dash one-nine-dash-zero-zero-three-two-one, Legisstar file ID five-four-nine-six-one on four sixteen, twenty nineteen. All those in favor say I, opposed, no. The clerk will call the roll.
Altazar?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Grant?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Rebecca?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, Legisstar six-zero-two-two-four, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a project agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, WISDOT, and other project partners to construct interchange at USH twelve eighteen in County AB. Tom, are you taking that one? Should be good.
Yes, I, I think because it's nine o'clock at night, I don't want to belabor the board and present information that's been presented at previous meetings. I think I'd like to just show perhaps five slides. It might be new information or might clarify some things that I, I seem to realize that they are, they've been confusing other people that have been emailing me recently. Do I have permission to share? I do have permission to share now. I need to. Yeah, I'm going to share right here. Again, in the interest of time, I just want to go to maybe pertinent slides with the board, realizing that I have other slides if you want to use them for discussion. I think one slide is that the fact that perhaps the DOT has been trying to get Madison to do this project. And that's not really a, a correct characterization of, of how this project came about. How this project came about is that about a year and a half ago, the DOT was very interested in reconstructing the Beltline and I ninety-four interchange. Much of their purpose and need dealt with safety for reconstructing that interchange. And a lot of the support that they, they had for reconstructing that interchange had to do with the intersections of Mill Pond and County AB. The DOT had removed any improvements to those two intersections based on that reconstruction. And so because it was consistent with Yehara Hills and their administration at the time, Madison sent several letters saying that you're reconstructing this interchange, but you're, you're not addressing the most important safety needs. And so we requested that they address the safety needs of these two intersections. And because of the letters and then perhaps because of a change in philosophy at the DOT in the recent eighteen months, I'll say, they did come back and relook at these two intersections. So that was the origin. It's not like they said, we want to put this in, can we get you to agree? It's more, you said that the safety of these intersections is unacceptable and something needs to be done. There's lots of slides that I, I won't go through. The safety needs of this, these two intersections are enormous. They're the top two or top second and third highest injury in, in the city. This is how the Yehara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan shows County AB and Meyer Road. I'm just showing you that so that if it wants to be a discussion point, we have it available for the board. This slide right here Um, this slide right here, um. Should have been made probably four months ago. Uh, there's been quite a bit of. Of um. Confusion over what is being planned. Everything that's in black is being proposed by. WISDOT. Um, what is being shown in blue is what um, this resolution proposes. Madison would pay for. So. Uh, basically, it's a local frontage road that would connect Mill Pond Road and the golf course. Uh, to this access. Um, the yellow represents a future plan. Um. Uh, this right here. Um, it's the Yehara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan. I believe Brian Grady. Will be online to answer questions about it. This is the bike pit connections in it. Um, the red represents um. Uh, shared use paths, blue represents bike lanes. What's outlined in yellow is what's being proposed by uh, WISDOT's plan. Um. I'm going to share uh, three uh, cross-sections. Because I guess I haven't shared them before and I. I, I sense that they would be useful for people to. Have seen them previously. Um, this is a typical section of what's being proposed at Mill Pond Road. So to the left. You have. Um, Highway twelve and eighteen, sixty mile an hour. Roadway, basically. Mill Pond Road would be. Here, eleven-foot travel lanes, five-foot bike lanes. And then there's a ten-foot shared use path. On the south side, so that would be on the golf course side. Um. As Mill Pond Road connects with County AB. So this is south. So. Uh, maybe I'll just go back to this. Uh, as Mill Pond Road connects with AB right here. This section right here. Is characterized by this typical section. Uh, where you have bike lanes on the roadway, five foot, but then you, you. Maintain the ten-foot. Shared use path. Over the bridge, um. They don't label them and they perhaps should, but they have a kind of two different sections here. A, a travel lane, a five-foot shoulder, but they don't call out as a bike path. And then a ten-foot race sidewalk. That would be um. On the west side of the bridge. On the east side of the bridge, they have a. Fourteen-foot. Shared use path raised fourteen-foot shared. North, north, which is basically uh, when a. North of the interchange, which this is bend around right here. I don't know if you can see my cursor. It's meant to be a temporary condition until the realignment of AB. North, uh, there would be, just be bike lanes. Um, in the interim connection. Condition, uh, when it goes to the. Uh, when I say the long-term condition, the typical section would be the same as. Um, what's being proposed south. Of the interchange, which is, is right here, shared use now. And so that's um. But I think that summarizes the new information. And I'm available for questions. Should I stop sharing? Maybe I should put it on something else.
You're muted, Tom. If you, Tom Wilson, you're muted.
Thank you. I unmuted you, but not myself.
Uh, questions for me then?
Yes, go ahead, Alder Foster, sorry.
Thank you. Um. Thanks, Tom. Uh, can you pull up slide ten?
Uh, could you, I have a lot of hidden slides, so.
Actually, maybe that, um. That one might work. Um, well, just one before that one, maybe?
Um, this one does the same, this one?
Yeah, so. It says planned Meyer Road. Was this, was this um, an image from the Yehara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan or is this a current? Like a new diagram, I guess?
Uh, this is uh, from the Yehara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan. What I did though is uh, I annotated it. Um. Other people were looking at this and they couldn't see the different aspects of it, so I. Um, annotated it so that people could see what being.
Okay. So that my, I guess my one question on it then, and since it sounds like this is your annotation, you should be able to answer it. Um. So where it says planned Meyer Road overpass, can you? I guess speak to what the plan is for that? Um, obviously that doesn't mean programmed, but what, what is the plan and what would the timeline for that overpass be?
Uh, here, I'll uh. Oh, I'm going to show another slide which, um. Is that too busy for everyone? And I, I'm going to, I'm going to speak from this, okay? Um, so. Um. The, the Meyer Road overpass is actually somewhat difficult, um. Speaking with engineering Rob. Uh, the reason why it's so difficult is you see there's a fair number of wetlands. Here. Um. That would be, it's just, I, I'm going to say they have increased regulatory constraints. Um, the DOT evaluated. An old. They looked at two different alignments of AB right here. Um. And this is the one that they preferred. What you see here are um. Would call, it's basically a jug handle, so there would be at-grade right in, right out here. And then people would use this as a way to get across. Um, I believe this had a cost of between fifteen and eighteen million dollars. Um. Have to. I believe that's what it was. Uh. It. I guess there was a um. A couple of reasons why the DOT is not pursuing it. They. It kind of solves half of the safety problem, not all of the safety problem. Um, and um, this, you know, County AB is. The minor arterial, you know, and. DOT often, they, they plan for minor arterials. Um. Meyer Road is a local road and if, if you go to the north of Meyer Road, it's still quite rural in nature, so it's not a. I, I want to say this in a. Um. Think WISDOT chose to spend their investment at AB. Maybe that's.
So is the. So it's, it's, it's maybe not exactly planned then, and it sounds like there may even be issues where it, it may not be. Pursued at all because of some of the. Challenges with the location? Is that what I'm hearing?
We could officially map this. But all of these, none of these improvements have been officially mapped. And the city. Has the powers of official mapping and that could be. We have not employed the, those powers very frequently. And uh, I brought that up and I've spoken with Rob Phillips too about this is something that. Uh, we could do. We could officially map it so that. I want to say this in a correct, when and if development occurs. In the whole chunk area. As well as when and if development occurs. With landfill and how it, it chooses to manage. The demand it has. Um. They would not preclude. Meyer Road inter- overpass.
And then could you speak to, I think you mentioned, maybe at finance, you mentioned sort of the, the difference between uh, kind of low, what's considered local portion of a project versus the WISDOT portion? Um, I don't need you to go through that for the, the proposed project, but in terms of this uh, future Meyer Road. Connection, what is, how does WISDOT interpret that? Do they see? That connection across the freeway as a local issue that we need to resolve or? I guess I'm surprised that that wasn't completed as part of the interchange project and what's the likelihood of? WISDOT paying for that uh, Meyer Road extension at some point in the future?
Um. Uh, I'll just. I'll be. Say to my recollection, okay. WISDOT at one point had a um. Very extensive. Um, for the reconstruction of the Beltline Interchange. Uh, it almost totaled a half billion dollars. Okay, and with. Uh, that reconstruction, they actually had to. The reason why they were proposing the Meyer Road overpasses. To my knowledge, it was required, you know? Um. It was a turbine type of interchange. Um, then perhaps, I'm going to say about. Six years ago. The philosophy of the department changed and they were much more cost-conscious. And so they uh, dramatically scaled back what the Beltline Interchange was going to be. So it was um. It was. Between an eighty and a hundred million dollar project. And this is based on my rec- recollection. And uh, they basically kept most of the ramps intact and so the construction of a. Meyer Road overpass was not needed and so they removed it from the project.
And in terms of getting a future project schedule. Again, is that something that you are understanding that what sort of, is just. Put on our shoulders then, or is that a future project that DOT is still considering but didn't do? Yet?
Um, I, uh, I'll just think. Um. I'll be um, frank. Even though I'm Tom. Uh. I do not believe that the DOT will uh, pursue this. It would be on Madison's shoulders. Um. I think throughout the state, you know, there's many um. Communities that would like more crossings, you know? Brown County, you know, Green Bay wants more crossings. Uh, in Madison, even we ourselves would probably, if we had. One place to put a crossing, we would probably like to put a crossing between Whitney Way and Danan Road. Um, just because of the, the demand between the two sides of the Beltline there is so great. I do not think that. The DOT will fund this or will volunteer to fund this. It would be on Madison's shoulders.
Thank you. Uh, on, can you move forward? Um. A slide or two? Slide twelve. Uh, yeah, I guess that one. So. I'm trying to get a better sense of, I, I know there's a proposed shared use path along the frontage road or along Mill Pond Road. Um, as well as it looks like there was um, at least a, a extra wide sidewalk on one side of the bridge overpass. But was sort of carved out in the middle there, that red dot uh, with a, a proposed basically shared use. Um, separated crossing. That wouldn't require going through roundabouts and on AB. It looks like that's not part of the proposed project?
Uh, it's not part of the, the currently proposed project, um. And I'm not, I am unfamiliar with the background of this. If Brian Grady is online, he would be able to answer that.
Don't see anyone by that name.
Okay, I do uh, know, I'll say one or two um. When I say challenges?
Looks like Brian is here. He raised his hand.
Oh, there we go.
Everyone?
Now, I'd like to speak to a challenge. After he gets done.
Sure, uh, Brian Grady, Principal Planner in the Planning Division. And so, yeah, we um. Back into this plan, uh, adopted in, I think it was twenty seventeen. We had shown that, that red circle there, that potential um. Grade separated ped bike crossing. Because the thought was that potentially the, kind of the current AB alignment could be used as a, basically a bike path or. Where AB currently goes north south on the edge of the bike. Still. Uh, uh, overpass could tie into that. And then there would be, you know, very quiet uh, ped bike path. Ped bike path rather than going along the bike lanes along a relocated AB. I think the um, what's kind of open is. Um, we are recommending relocating AB to the east as, as shown in this map with the blue lines. Because that does uh, two things. One, it allows. This new road, this new AB to go through an area that could have development on both sides. And we see this as kind of a continuation of the light industrial area. That exists along Pembroke Drive, kind of the GE Healthcare area. Um, and then also relocate AB. Allows the landfill to potentially expand in this area. They could expand to the east. Um, obviously if that, uh, if old AB is used for a bike path, I will be in a situation with landfill not be expanded. Uh, but I think overall, um, that's something that we, the plan recommended. I'm not sure what the cost of that overpass would be. And I think that uh, with the proposed interchange with the shared use path accommodation. I would say that probably incorporates the, the plans. Uh, recommended ped bike overpass.
And then I'll uh, just talk about some complications. Uh, again, I don't know everything. I'm going to zoom in. Um. But in this area right now, um, the landfill has some detention pond. So that has become a factor in the design of the interchange. And there um. You know, there's. There's uh. Not very good at, at sharing screens with Zoom. Yeah, it, it's become a. A factor. Um, a complicating factor. In the partnership between the landfill, Dane County, the whole chunk nation, the town of. Otters Grove. And. But it's a, um. Strength.
But Tom, can you help then maybe show, uh, connect the dots between the proposed um. Shared use path running along the road and how that is expected to connect up to the wide sidewalk that's on the proposed. Bridge, absent as a different crossing?
Um.
Are, are bikes supposed to be?
Yes.
The bous, or what? Like how does it, I didn't see any plan view of it.
Um, so if you go like this. I wonder if um. Perhaps I'll use this. This might be a, a, a. Um, a better way of uh, doing it. So there, there would be bike lanes. Here, I'm going to. Bike lanes north, so I, you come down on. AB, you cross.
Wait, like, so on, on the road, lanes, not a shared use path?
Uh, north of the interchange, it's lanes. S- south. This is all path. This is all path. This is all path. This is all path. So basically, everything, um. That I just drew and I'm going to maybe. Um, make that orange. That would how, be how a bike would. Get there. This, uh, this piece right here, I'm going to make this. Right, I'm doing PowerPoint on the slide. What you see in green would be bike lanes because that's meant to be temporary.
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful. So the, so the shared use path would cross the, the new AB alignment. A sort of south of that. Southern roundabout. And then would be. Separated from. All basically, at least the first two roundabouts to the south of the, of twelve and eighteen. And then somewhere around the roundabout north of twelve and eighteen would transition into bike lanes for the short term and then eventually be a continuation.
Yes, I'll uh, I'll go back to uh. This is the, the bridge. I believe this is looking north, um. This is fourteen feet, um. And this is ten feet, uh. These are actually, um. I used to work with the DOT quite a bit. These are pretty generous. Um, normally I wouldn't, you wouldn't see dimensions as generous. Um. This is a County AB between Mill Pond. And um, twelve eighteen. And so uh. This is probably looking north. You can see. A bike lane here, a bike lane here. So if you wanted to go through, let's say you're an experienced rider. And you want to use the roundabout, you can just use it as a. A vehicle. Vehicle. There also is a shared use path to the east.
Thank you, um. The roundabouts that are being proposed, I think you said maybe at a previous meeting. A combination of single and multi lane roundabouts, you to what those are.
Uh, yeah, so there's a, um. Uh, this does not show it, um. It's a combination of a single lane and multi lane, uh, roundabouts. Makes them multi lane or a portion of them multi lane has to do with the, um, the trip generation that would occur. With Hochunk proposal, development proposal. And so, um. Some portions of those roundabouts would be expanded. To address traffic generated by the Hochunk proposal. Now, whether these are constructed. With or without that expansion probably has to do more with the timing of. The Hochunk proposal, I guess I don't know exactly, I shouldn't say, I don't know.
And what, what is the overall in terms of, um, so what's in front of us is to basically commit the city of Madison to. Chip in our five to six million for the Mill Pond Road. Um. Assuming we recommend that and we vote to approve that, the project is moving forward. Who controls the ultimate geometry design and what would be the city's role, uh, you know, Transportation Commission or the City Council's role in. Um, reviewing and approving some of those, um, kind of finer details.
Um. I'll tell you what I, I believe, I, I believe that we could present this geometry to, um. Um. To our commissions and it'd be, um. Consistent with WISDOT's policy to have public interaction and public involvement meetings. Um, but, um. Unlike, let's say, East Washington or, um, Packers, where we. Have approving authority. Well, I don't believe we have approving authority here, I think we have commenting authority. That, uh, for instance, we provided comments on the beltline interchange. But. We couldn't, um. Not approve the belt, you know what I mean, we didn't have the power to, um. To stop the Beltline Interchange with I thirty. We had the power to comment on it.
Got it, thank you, and my last question, um, so again, assuming we want to commit these funds, what, um. I think you can have a fight on this, but what? Does this bump in our tip then in order to make room for six million dollars in twenty-two, I think it was, or maybe it was, remember what year this?
Yeah, the, the, the frontage road has to do, uh, something with, um. Between three point five and five point five million. A lot of it depends on how the right of way might be characterized. There is, I, I believe about five acres of right of way that's required, kind of in a strip like manner here. In a strip like manner here. Um, we've brought this up. And with a, um. Uh, Matt Walker, Matt Mickeljessi, they did not express, um. Deep concerns and, um. I think generally, I'm going to say this in a. Safer accesses generally to. Uh, this is my opinion, I, I think it's. The benefit of the properties that are trying to develop as well as. Um, the benefit that Eastern Madison is trying to develop, now that's my opinion. Maybe Brian might be able to augment it or. Say my opinion's wrong.
Tom, I think you need to unmute him.
Who am I unmuting?
Uh, Brian.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, um. I guess Tom, Tom's definitely more in tune with, uh, financial aspects of this, but. We'll say from, uh, you know, personally, uh, and with the city for almost fourteen years now and doing plans for our edge areas. Um, even when we went back to twenty thirteen when DOT was looking at this, this conversion to a freeway. We were trying to guide this interchange into location, one that it could become an interchange and this alignment does that. Uh, to basically allow this area to develop, allow that industrial area. Uh, long time right to continue to develop, come out this direction, and then also all the neighborhoods, uh, north, north of here. Went up to Buckeye Road, uh, to. The Scraker Neighborhood, uh, Grandview Commons, up to Reiner Road north of there, this has always been the long-term plan to have this be the. Uh, regional arterial, and so. Um, to me, the, the opportunity to do this for the five point five million dollars to not only serve the immediate properties of the golf course and. Hochunk and adjacent lands, but also to. Uh, to provide the, the access to many neighborhoods in the north of here is, is definitely a great value and. And happy that this has come along after, after some pretty, uh, bleak years over the last. Four or six years or so.
Thank you, those are all my questions.
Okay, looks like, um, Baltazar, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks, Tom and Brian. So, eh, what question, eh, just, just to inform me, eh, what happens if we do not authorize this, you know, like? Eh, and, and then, you know, if we do not, if the city of Madison doesn't partner with DOT. You know, like, what will happen to the whole, eh, project?
Um. I don't know. I, uh, I think, uh. This has gone before, this will go before three boards and then the council, it goes to the council tomorrow. Um. And so I, I think the DOT would expect us to pay our share, I don't know what they would do, um. If we did not. You'd have to. Ask. It also goes before the, um. MPO on Wednesday. And, um, this could have between. Five fifteen million dollars of federal funds. And so. If, uh, the MPO board did not put it in its plan, then. I'm, I'm sure that this probably could not occur without those federal. Um, if. The city decided not to pay. For its frontage road, I, I don't know what would happen.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tom or staff, I should say. Okay, seeing none. Checking again here. All right, seeing none, is there a motion?
Can I just say there was a, a, a public registrant?
Oh. Right, yes, thank you, um, thank you, Ann. Um, so we do have, like I said, we do have one, uh, Dan Brown, if you're still with us, if you'd like to speak.
Dan is still with us and he should be unmuted here. Dan, you may or may not have a, a prompt. On your screen. There we go. Dan, are you there? You're unmuted on our end, Dan, go ahead.
Dan Brown, can, can you hear us?
If you have a mute button on your microphone, you may want to check that.
Okay. One more time, Dan Brown, can you hear us, we cannot hear you, so make sure you check all of your equipment to make sure nothing's muted if you can hear us. Okay, um. Seeing as we can't get a hold of Dan, we'll move on.
I will just say that he was registered in support.
Okay, thank you, Ann, and then thank you for reminding me, um. That he had registered. Okay, um. Is there? A motion? Please use the hand raise feature. Alder Furman, I assume that's a. Move approval?
Move adoption.
Is there a second? Robert?
I will second.
Thank you, Robert. Um. Let's see, hold on a moment. Alder Furman, did you want to speak at all to your motion?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, discussion? Please use the hand raise feature. Seeing none, oh. Looks like we have one. Uh, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, thanks, um, we've talked about this before, um, I think it's going to go through the process. And I think that the, um. City staff and the city as a, as a bodies. Uh, motivations here are, are. Totally above board and honest and great to reduce the traffic. Crashers that are, uh, happening here. Um, but I don't think it's a, the best possible outcome. And I, just since we are a policy board. I just wanted to, I know it's late, I won't go on and on, but. At least touch on this as a policy matter. Um, it's two and a half miles from A B to the nearest other crossing across the Beltline. Or that doesn't include the interstate. Uh, without Mill Pond in there, um. It's going to be, you know, it's basically, um. Walled off to pets and bikes, and yes, we could put a bunch of. Bike lanes on and I'm glad that they are there, better than not having them. But, um, you know, the distances are such that it's. Really not well connected, it's going to be very auto oriented. Um, the design that relies on. All these frontage roads is sort of reminiscent of the Beltline in the Todd Drive area, which I don't think is really what we're shooting for in Madison these days. Uh, but yet we're replicating it. Um, and I understand. There are a lot of players have been in this in the history and. We can't get the state to do everything we want, we don't have all the money that we want for everything that we want. But really, you know, big picture, if, if this. Safety issue, you know, if we really lived Vision Zero. We being writ large, including the, the state and other stakeholders here, would have done something about this before now and waited. And before we had, you know. Thirty, forty million dollars to do a big interchange, I mean, you could do a lot with signs and chevrons and. Um, other operational stuff that would have cut down on the carnage there and maybe even. Made it so that we didn't have to have. Um, an interchange there, I mean, by, by, without any real policy. Or planning agreement, we're actually extending the Beltline, that's what we're doing here, the Beltline is now going to be an extra mile. The east and it sounds like it's going to continue. Being grade separated on the east beyond that. Um. So, um, again, I don't, I am not meaning to beat up on. Tom who's organized all of this, um. And, and I do think it's going to pass, I, I think, uh, might just abstain on this motion because I'm conflicted about the. The negatives and positives, but, um, I did think, I did want to at least. Address some of the bigger policy concerns, thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, I'll be brief, um, Eric, I think really. Heard a lot of my sentiments on this as well, you know, it feels like we're, um. This is a, a monster freight train, that there's no possibility of stopping, um, and it's. But I think it's really important to understand that this project is, is really two things, it, um, it. Could and should. Improve the, the traffic safety at both of these crossings, and that's something I'm really supportive of, and I know that's a primary driver for, for Tom, and I. I'm really supportive of, um, of improving the safety. And it's also a freeway extension, expansion, um, and really through. An area that right now feels like countryside and, you know, off past the interstate. But if you read the Ahara Hills, uh, Neighborhood Development Plan, what's expected to be out there, the number of homes for people and jobs. You know, you just have to imagine at some point Madison was thinking that. You know, west of Midvale was. Really far on the outskirts, and so now, you know, we're, we're dealing with the challenges of trying to get across the Beltline. In my district, I've got Stoughton Road and I've got Highway fifty-one and Highway thirty. And it's just, you know, we're, we're. We're dreaming about trying to get some connections across those things, we, you know, we had a Stoughton Road revitalization concept of. Take away those. Grade separated crossings, we just got done talking about it for the Oscar Meyer Plan, about how we would really dream of. Getting rid of the Packers Aberg grade separated crossing, and then here we are. Taking a grade separated crossing and, or a, an upgrade crossing and, and separating and extending that freeway, and we just, we know what. Freeways do to cities, to, to communities, and it's not good. Um, so I, I also feel. I, it, it is important to acknowledge that I, I know a lot of. A lot of work has gone into it, and I really appreciate a lot of the thought, especially around trying to provide. Um, some ped bike accommodations along with it, I, you know, that this could easily have been a, a. Project that had none of that and could be really bad. Um, but again, from a transportation policy perspective and for the city of Madison. We're shooting ourselves in the foot, and, you know, when we talk about COVID and, and the changes that it's making, I mean. We're just really doubling down on more of the same, more auto centric, expanding the freeway, and I, at some point, we just have to say no, so. I'm, I'm disappointed in, as well, but also really appreciative of the, the work that our staff has done. To, um, try and make it, uh, as good a project as possible.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Um, so on recommend, uh, recommend, recommending that we, uh. The authorization of the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a project agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And other project partners to construct an interchange at U S H twelve eighteen and County A B. Those in favor say aye, opposed no, the clerk, the clerk will call the roll.
Baltazar?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Grant?
No.
Keith?
Hi.
Rebecca?
No.
Margaret?
No.
Robert?
Hi.
Four uses, one abstention, three noes.
That's a tie.
Tom is waving his hand, uh, frantically here, go ahead, Tom.
Yes, um. We had some very strange thing like this happen at Transportation Commission. Over. And I, I believe we, we need to have a majority of, uh. Whereas. The, the motion. Passed. Motion passed with a majority, but we didn't have a majority of the. Mission, and so it actually. Failed, but we didn't know it had failed. I think Alder Foster, do you recollect this?
Yeah, it was a little bit different scenario, I think right now, uh, the chair has an option of voting and of. As I understand that we would need five votes for this item to pass, so I think if the chair, uh, chooses to vote then, and vote affirmatively, then. Motion pass, and if not, then my understanding is the motion would fail.
That's my understanding as well.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, the chair votes no. So we will then move on. Okay, the next items of business are DOT updates. So in the interest of time, I'd like to get out of here as soon as possible. I think all of you feel the same. Tom, as we go through these, if there are items uh for which um staff is not looking for feedback or that we could potentially address. At um what would hopefully be next month's meeting, um, do you maybe let us know that and perhaps we could refer them? Um. That said, um, the next item is Legistar six zero three one seven Metro Status and Update on Metro Restructure RFP. I think Mike is our presenter.
Thank you. This is gonna be really quick. Uh, we received five proposals. The RFP uh was due. I think about a about a about a week or so ago. We delayed the deadline by two weeks. In case the consultants needed to figure things out with the coronavirus, um, that really started hitting right in the. Midpoint of when they were preparing their proposals, and so I thought we'd give them time to react to that. Um. We have a a a a s- small group that will look at the, look at the proposals. The policy board asked that one of their members be included on that group and. Uh, Mayor's Office invited Chris McAhill, uh, who will be and who will be uh helping us review those proposals. Um, general schedule is to start the project uh later, late summer, fall this year with data collection, et cetera. Alternatives development um in the spring of next year, twenty twenty-one, meetings early to mid twenty-one. Hopefully uh in person, we'll do what we have to do and then wrapping up later in in twenty-one. Um, uh, we're going with, we kind of slowed down the schedule quite a bit. With coronavirus, again, we just, we don't know what that is going to look like. Um, you know, if we give a, if we get a little bit more time. Then we can uh have a more relevant plan. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a a series of slides that I I won't show. Um, in the interest of time.
Are they in Legistar, Tom? I think.
Uh, they are in Legistar.
Okay.
The bo- the bottom line is, is that um we're in a very challenging situation and that. Basically, with cleaning our buses the way we do, costs us twenty percent more. Provide the similar transit service that we had, and our revenues are down. Um, through a variety of sources. And so um, the situation that we thought we were gonna have when we. Wrote the RFP and the situation that we have are quite different. Um, however. Uh, the good thing about it is if you ever want to be reevaluating your routes and have an expert help you. Uh, now is a good time to have that expertise on the team, if you might.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, we will move on to Legistar six zero three one eight.
Um. Oh, we had Alder Foster's raising his hand.
We did? I'm sorry, I must see. Okay, I just had scrolled down. Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so the mayor mentioned today, I think there's a question for you, Tom. The mayor mentioned, um. You know, perhaps needing to rethink the parameters of what a a route analysis would be. And maybe, you know, think things have changed in terms of not. Saying what would the new system look like that expects, you know, that the goals are to have um increased ridership. Um, you know, expectations of certain revenue streams, et cetera. I know the RFP itself had a number of. Elements written into it about sort of expectations and what what we were looking for. I'm assuming that all of that is sort of up for discussion still and that perhaps. I mean, the the work of identifying a partner probably moves forward without needing to to really look at that, but. Is there, are we gonna, are we gonna, I guess, consider updating some of the goals of that? Of the work itself before it's before it started?
Yeah, I I think um part of the consultant's work will be to establish goals with the technical committee. Or the our policy committees. Um, I think what's different is the parameters. Are substantially different. Um, you know, right, we're used to transporting fifty-eight thousand on a. On a weekday, and now we're transporting five thousand. And how quickly can we build that back? You know, we're used to getting thirteen million dollars in a passenger revenue. And this year, if we're fortunate, we may get six million dollars. How does that affect our our resources? Um, so I think uh the consultant and what we put into the RFP. Um, is to establish goals jointly with the policy committee. It's just that the resources and the revenues and the parameters that. Uh, will go into developing a route structure are are different now than these. Does that answer your question?
I I think so. I guess I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I guess the RFP itself isn't, I mean, that's just the RFP and there would be. A contract that would be created. I just wanted to make sure that we're appropriately adjusting what our expectations are and what the deliverables are. For this work, because the way it was written obviously was pre-COVID and just recollecting, for example. You know, we were expecting a a net neutral sort of cost system. Perhaps what we're gonna need to do is actually ask for a system that costs less than what we have been putting into it. Um, so I I guess. It sounds like they'll, once we have a consultant, there'll be engagement with the the board and we will work through those. Items to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what the what the work in front of us actually is.
Yeah, I I mean, basically, and you know, Justin's been through this as well. Um, we'll have to make decisions versus frequency and coverage, right? And in the next six weeks, we'll be developing operating budgets and capital budgets for Metro. Right, that goes through the process. And so we'll understand. More two months from now, and probably two months from now would be when we might have a contract signed, right? So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Further questions on this item? This is Metro Status Update, seeing none. Moving on to Legistar six zero three one eight. Uh, COVID nineteen transportation items, uh, Tom and Sabrina. Should be unmuted now.
Sure. And I do have a. A very brief presentation. Um, I will kind of skip through. Most of these, are folks able to see this?
Yes.
Uh, so just an update on parking division. Um, the operational changes, uh, like other agencies. Uh, increased disinfecting, limiting uh vehicle occupancy for staff, one vehicle. Uh, remote working and um face coverings for staff. Uh, on-street parking restrictions remain suspended. Uh, we've updated our um. Single space meters so that they do not accept payment. The displays are now a message to indicate that those are um. Uh, free through May twenty-fifth. Uh, also posted, no payment required on multi-space. Uh, and April parking restrictions as well. Um, just want to highlight some of the communications. That we've done in addition to posting in those locations at meters. Also, our J S uh information is up to date and reflects. Which parking restrictions are suspended, so folks can take a look at their neighborhood streets and if they have questions, they can see those reflected there. Also communicate with particularly uh social media and website. Uh, we've had a number of curb side pickup areas we've put in, um, by suspending the meters. It's sort of created a new problem of. Everyone parking on street, um, and no longer using parking garages for long-term parking. Uh, so. As a result, we needed to create uh new restrictions, putting in curb side loading for stereo. Uh, these are also shown uh reflected, um, and kept up to date in terms of where those locations are. Currently, we've got sixty-one curb side pickup locations where we use all signage and others are shown in red. Uh, and hopefully the the impact um won the on-street parking, but uh the vast majority would be. Just uh the the fact that uh folks are staying home. Couple photos taken from Government East and the Overture Center garages. The last couple of days. Uh, show almost completely vacant vehicles. I think a ton of less than ten vehicles driving through uh the garages during pretty peak times. Or times that normally be peak. Uh, just taking a quick snapshot from April of last year. Government East for, this is non-permit revenue and and other services, just the daily parker and special event revenue. So a hundred and forty thousand at Government East, a hundred and forty-seven thousand at Overture, April, with seventy-two and ninety-two percent of occupancy. Uh, revenue for April of this year was three thousand five hundred and seventy and Overture Center. Uh, three thousand five hundred and forty, and occupancies are basically about two to three percent. Uh, as soon as you can see, it's, you know, currently we're seeing almost total losses of of revenue, uh. So it's a major impact to our budget as well. Uh, with that, is there any questions from both?
I'm, you're muted.
Yeah. It looks like there was one registrant um to speak, Mark Cotter in opposition. Um, not wishing to speak. Uh, I don't see that person on the um attendees list any longer, but there we are. Um, questions for staff, uh, Margaret?
Not a question, just a comment. I wanted to thank Sabrina uh for her communications. Uh, about the parking restrictions on streets. There was a great deal of um. Discussion about it, and she was very, very helpful in explaining what was going on and sharing that. So that the rest of us could get the word out and uh calm some wild rumors about parking tickets. So I really appreciated that and hadn't gotten a chance to say thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Further questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to Legistar six zero three six zero Wilson Street Corridor Plan. Tom, I think the intent with it with this was just to. Um, i- is it still being worked on as the timeline shifted?
Yeah, I think maybe in the interest of time, I have an email here that I can send out to um. Everyone on on the committee that basically gives the status of Wilson Street and the Green Street. So that's items ten and item thirteen.
Okay.
Sufficient. I'll do that. If you want me to read through them, I'll do that as well.
Uh, thank you, Tom. Um, looks like Alder Foster.
I was just gonna say, maybe we could get them um attached to the Legistar also for anybody of the the public that wants to see that email would be good, I think.
Alright, I can do that.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, so without objection, um, we will do that and we will move on. Please raise your hand if you want to discuss that item further. And seeing none, we'll go, move on to Legistar six zero three four two uh vehicle miles traveled and mobility issues or initiatives, excuse me. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I um, I wanted to consider uh referring this item to our next meeting.
So, hold on, Tom. Um, is there a second? So I can get a second for that. Second for referring the item. Um, looks like Alder Furman, is that a yes?
Wait, could I?
Oh, hold on, Tommy, you'll get to talk. Yeah, we can discuss. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Um, okay, so this item is uh about, I, because the V M T is down. Um, we think this is a prime opportunity, capture some bus lanes and bike lanes. And we think we could do that this summer, and we think we can do that with some monies that we already have identified. But. I guess what we'd like, I'd like policy, at least some policy guidance on this. If we wait till June or July, then it it probably becomes a twenty twenty. One type of thing. Uh, I think it's not a philosophical discussion. It's actually something that we would like to do. We'd like to do it in June and July. In August, if possible.
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Uh, so, I I mean, I'm I'm happy to talk about it tonight. Um, I think it's a, it's really exciting and I'm really supportive of it. Um, we could also just take a vote on it if that's what you're, if you know, if you're looking, we can, we can give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Um, if you have like specific projects that you're wanting to move on, the other option would be to also just bring those to the Transportation Commission. And just put out some specific, hey, we're wanting to add a, you know, put a bus lane here, a bike lane here, and I I think they'd actually be the appropriate body. To look at any specific ones anyway. Um, so that might help with the timeline. My, basically, I I'd love that. I think this is a really important conversation to have. And I just didn't want to shorten it tonight and, you know, kind of rush through it. But if you're looking, if, you know, if you need some. Feedback as to whether this is a good direction, then I, then we should have the conversation tonight.
Tom?
Um. I, whole presentation in five minutes. I can show you one slide in one minute. And we'll tell you what we're considering. So I guess up to the uh desire of the body.
Um. I see, Robert, I see you raising your hand here. Go ahead.
Sure. I was just saying, i- if it's a difference between one minute or five minutes, I'd go with the five minutes. We get the. The whole story before we make a vote.
Okay, um, I'm lowering all of the hands that were up. So if you still want to speak, make sure you put your hand back up again. Um, we do actually have a motion to refer in front of us. Let me just deal with that um first. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alder Foster.
That's fine, go ahead.
Okay, I think I know where, I think we all know where it's gonna go. Um, those in favor of referring say aye, opposed no. The clerk will call the roll.
Altsar? Are you saying no? Oh, okay. Altsar?
I think I'm just going, I don't know, no, yeah, I, I have no idea. I think I got lost, eh.
So, so, um.
Yes.
There was a motion to refer to the, our next meeting.
Oh, no.
It, okay, good. Thank you.
Chris?
No.
Eric?
No.
Grant?
No.
Keith?
No.
Rebecca?
No.
Margaret?
No.
Robert?
No.
You're unanimous.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Allow me to have this opportunity. I I will be wise stewards of your um. Your time. Um. Help. Nate? Um. Last time. We went through a recession, was right around two thousand eight. And um, the vehicle miles traveled plateaued for almost six years. Was just due to an economic recession. Um, this recession is probably gonna be much more dramatic. And then people have just learned a different way of working. So we have an opportunity to perhaps capture some right-of-way and lane capacity. Um, an example of this um is two corridors within the city. The left is Atwood. The blue represents what occurred at the beginning of March, and um the gray. Represents what's in um April. So the the question is, is um, um, V M T is at its lowest as it's been in decades. um, VMT is at its lowest as it's been in decades. It will take years before VMT reaches 2019 um, levels. Many of our future initiatives will require the reallocation of right-of-way. For instance, Bus Rapid Transit. And then so should we consider reallocating right-of-way now, meaning this summer, because it will cost less income to the public? Areas we are considering right now, um, would be to take, um, I'm just going to go through them one by one, um, rather than show you pictures. Uh, westbound lane, basically, um, from Highway 30, um, down to close to Milwaukee Street. Uh, a transit lane on East Washington in 2021. Uh, taking a right bus lane on Johnson Street in the eastbound direction, uh, that will be needed for BRT. Um, we're considering a cycle track on a portion of Odana right here, a buffered bike lanes on Seago and, uh, converting, uh, Odana Road to, um, a twiddle, two-way left turn lane with bike lanes. And then on Mineral Point Road reinforce the, the bike lanes. Uh, we feel like we have, we can identify sources of funding for most of these except for perhaps, um, the Odana a bike lane, uh, restriping Odana Road so that it's a two-way left turn lane with bike lane. Um, I have pictures to show all of them. Um, I think this is perhaps the most, the starkest one. This is what Johnson Street, capturing this lane for a bus would look like on Johnson Street. And we would only do this in areas where it does not affect, uh, businesses. Um, right now, we don't want to add any additional parking burdens, um, to businesses because they're going to have their own struggles to deal with when we get out of this. And so basically, I, I, I think, um, this is an example of, of, um, Odana Road, restriping that as a twiddle. And then this is an example of a protected cycle track north of Odana Gulf. Um, we feel like, um, this was not in our plans for the year, but we feel like since we were thrown a, a curve ball, maybe a reduced VMT, that we should capture the opportunity that this presents. That's the end of my presentation and our other comments and, or direction.
Thank you, Tom, and I think, thank you for being brief. Um, questions for Tom or comments? Can include that here as well, Alder Foster?
No questions, but yeah, big thumbs up from me in terms of, uh, pursuing this. Um, as I said before, I think it'd be great to, uh, bring any specific ones to the Transportation Commission. That way you get a, an opportunity for public input on any, you know, proposals and get, um, get their recommendation. I think there's a meeting next Wednesday. Um, I might even be able to put some items on, on that agenda.
Yeah, I, I believe it is on the agenda, I, I think.
Okay, perfect. Um, I would also just say, um, continue to, continue to look for more and additional opportunities as well. And it looks like you already got a great, you know, batch, um, or laid out here, but I, I think this is one of the things that we should be, uh, putting energy into moving forward. Um, so I would say, continue to do that. Um, and then also, um, I think we should also at some point consider some broader, um, treatments or even our, our local and collector streets as well. There's a lot of, um, there's so many people walking, uh, in my neighborhood, which is a relatively low-density residential neighborhood. Um, not a huge problem with traffic normally in a lot of the side streets, but with so many people walking, a lot of us are now starting to go into the street to try and avoid each other. And, um, it'd be great to just look at what it would cost to get a whole bunch of sawhorses and start putting them up to do some, some more of the Mifflin, uh, Mifflin Street style, you know, local traffic only, just kind of slowing everybody on the one lane in or out kind of content. So I would just add that in as something that, that staff should continue to look at and really, um, that are expanding this over the next year or so.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, Balthazar, go ahead.
Hi. Thank, thank you. And thanks, Tom, for, for that information. Uh, you know, I really like this. Thanks for looking into some of the areas of like the west side, you know, the Odana Road. Uh, I will encourage to push this, uh, towards the lower neighborhoods. You know, I think this might be a, the lower income neighborhoods. I think this might be an opportunity for us to, to do, to, to start thinking creative, creatively. Uh, but yeah, they, they, they think you're really, I, I really like this.
Thank you, Balthazar. Uh, further questions or comments for? Um, Eric, go ahead.
Uh, just added, it's just, I don't know if we're going to vote on this, but, um, or just take individual comments, but I agree. Thumbs up. Thank you very much for being, uh, alert to this opportunity and finding some good, um, good project that, um, should, um, be good for the long term. Thank you.
So I would certainly entertain a motion, uh, it sounds like to support and continue looking for more opportunities if there is such a motion or another motion. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor of, um, recording a support, uh, for these measures and, uh, that's a recommendation that staff continue looking for more opportunities. Say aye, oppose, no, the clerk will call the roll.
Uh, Balthazar?
100% aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Mar-
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
As is unanimously.
Hey. Thank you. Um, see next item. Uh, Legisdar six zero three four three, three, um, Division Zero Advanced Projects. Tom, is this one that you need a feedback from us on? Is it on the policy level or is it more, uh, like maybe over TC?
I think what I would propose to do, it's a, it's a complicated presentation that probably requires 15 minutes. And so I think it'd be best, um, if it gets postponed, I think I would like to share one screen so that people see just the locations we're looking at and then it'll, um, it'll be taken up, I believe, at Transportation Commission on the 15th.
Okay.
I think, but rather than, I, I think the presentation, we have to more detail because it requires talking about bus transit times and, and I don't know if anyone's in the mood for that right now.
I guess my question is, are you looking for policy feedback versus something that?
No, I, I guess we're not.
Okay.
Uh, the reason why, why I was showing it is because many of the alders on this committee voted for the $300,000 that, um, that was funded. And so it's more of a courtesy to the alders that, um, help fund this initiative.
Okay. Yeah, then go ahead and show that, that's, um, slide.
Um, I'm stopping and sharing this and I'm going to share a um, okay, so this is a, a budget amendment. It's actually $350,000. There are the sponsors, the amendment. Um, this, um, this slide right here represents the Division Zero candidates that we're proposing. Um, mostly speed limit reductions with, uh, enhanced measures like continental crosswalks. Um, the speed reduction is actually more more complicated than you would think because they affect, uh, the on-time performance of, of Metro. And so that's why we're, I need more time, but we're looking at East Washington Avenue, Milwaukee Street, Old Milton, Gammon, and then Prairie Road. Uh, with some spot improvements on Park Street. So that's it. And I, if there's an interest in a future meter, I, I can provide more detail.
Okay. Um, I think like Tom said, this is going to be on the TC agenda for the 15th. Um, so if folks want more information, they can certainly tune to that. Um, we can put it back on our agenda for the future. I don't know that referral is necessary. Um, if anyone disagrees, feel free to raise your hand or if you have additional questions, feel free to raise your hand. Otherwise, we will move on.
I believe that's on the 13th.
13th.
Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate that. Okay, seeing none. We are, we'll move on to, um, I guess item 13, Legisdar six zero three four four. We technically dealt with that with item, mm, was it nine?
10, I think.
10. Okay. So we will move on then to item, or 14, Legisdar six zero three six one, uh, TPBB role in, uh, COVID-19 recovery planning. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Well, I want to check with Tom before I put this motion forward, but I would, uh, was thinking we should refer this one and not start this conversation.
Yes. You, you beat me to it. Um, that one could, um, be a longer conversation. One we certainly need to have, but I think there'll be ample time to have it. Um, Tom, do you have a comment?
I think, um, really what we're talking about are how do we start back, Metro back up? How do we start parking back up and what can we capture? Um, with a reduced VMT. And so we, we discussed, uh, the reduced VMT a little bit today. I think, uh, the focus of this committee will, will be on what does Metro look like? That's how I, I envision this, the role of this committee. But perhaps there's greater visions and if there's more discussion that should be had, then it could be referred or had now, either way, I guess.
Alder Kimball, go ahead.
Um, if that was a motion, I would second it, but I would also say that we really need to be meeting our, our regular twice a, a month. I mean, if we're going to refer this and we're referring things, we really need to, um, figure out how to meet when we said we were going to meet, which is twice a month.
Thank you, Alder Kimball. Um, Alder Foster, I assume that was a, a motion. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it was a motion to, to refer.
Okay. So moved and seconded, um, further disc, or discussion? Seeing no discussion. Those in favor of referring this?
Who was, who was the second?
Um, Alder Kimball.
Thanks.
All those in favor of referring this to our next meeting, say aye, oppose, no. The clerk will call the roll.
Balthazar?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
You think?
All right. Thank you. Moving on then, last two items, um, Legisdar six zero three six two, General Alson's by the Chair. The only thing I will say is, goes without saying, um, this meeting was considerably longer than, um, I intended, so I apologize if you, um, heard the impression that it would be shorter. Uh, we did some heavy lifting, um, today and I think, uh, I think Alder Kimball put it pretty well. Um, we, I think at least the members of the board have the capacity, it seems like, and, uh, um, assuming we can, we can get the, um, the time to meet on Zoom, that it would be nice if we could meet more frequently because there are a lot of things that we do need to deal with that are important, that have not become less important. Some of them have become more important. Um, and then of course, we do have this additional role, um, now of, uh, uh, recovery planning. So hopefully we'll be able to meet, um, again, uh, more frequently, uh, in the future, or at least as frequently as we planned, um, like six months back when we started going to two, uh, meetings a month. That's all I have there. Any questions on that item? Comments? I think most things were said. Seeing none. Um, last item, six zero three six three, future meeting schedule. We don't have a future, uh, meeting scheduled right now. Um, I assume you will at least have one in June. Um, I certainly hope so. I'll be working with Tom's staff to, um, see if, if we can, um, get something planned. Um, joint meeting, um, I haven't, um, chatted with Ann Kovach, um, recently about a potential joint meeting. Um, as of right now, I think that's in the bin of, um, meetings that are not seen as essential. But I will continue to follow up on that and perhaps I'll give you an update at our next meeting if something changes. The last item on here is Traffic Calming Work Group. Um, that's another, that group has not yet met. We have not had our inaugural meeting. Um, I have a desire to get that going. Um, but as of now, it has not been, um, has not been allowed. That's all I have. I do see a few hands up. Uh, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, just if it's the second, uh, Alder Kimball's sentiments, if it's possible to have a second meeting in May, I think that would be warranted.
Thank you, Margaret. I will, uh, I will work to that end.
Thank you.
Further comments? All right, seeing none. That's all I have for the night. Thank you all for sticking with it. I know this was a very long meeting. I really appreciate it. I appreciate everyone who, um, all the staff members who were with us and those attendees who were still, um, on, actually, I don't think I see any attendees. One hand is yet raised. Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Move adjournment.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Furman. All those in favor of adjourn? Um, I oppose, no, the clerk will call the roll.
Balthazar?
Yes, aye.
Chris? Eric?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Night.
Thanks, Tom.
Good to see you.